Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Please find a seat. We'd like to get started. The City Council is reconvening from closed session and to report, we by a vote of five zero, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the case of Joseph Mohammed versus City Elk Grove Sacramento Superior Court Case Number thirty-four dash two thousand nineteen dash zero zero two five 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 nine seven. Would like to also note that Councilmember Nguyen has a conflict of interest concerning the Elk Grove Police Officers Association negotiations because her husband is a police officer and a member of the bargaining group, and she has recused herself from that closed session matter. Councilmember Nguyen did not participate in the discussion on this particular matter. Right, so let's adjourn the special meeting at six fifteen and let's call to order the regular City Council meeting on Wednesday, May the twenty-second at six fifteen. Mr. Clerk, if you can read the Metro replay this.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel fourteen on Friday, May twenty-fourth at one P.M. and Monday, May twenty-seventh at eight P.M. This being closed caption will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment or any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution twenty-ten dash two-four, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. Speaker timer on the podium counts down the individual speaker time remaining and will turn yellow after the first two minutes have passed, indicating one minute remains to summarize comments. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card, the blue cards that can be found at the back of the room, and provide to the Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Detrick.
Here.
Councilmember Suwen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here.
All right, next item.
That'll take us on to one point two, the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, I see a number of students out there, so I'm gonna pull the President of the club. And I haven't met you yet, so if you're here, why don't you step on us and lead us in the pledge? Or one of your representative, how about that? Thank you. Come on up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like, at the beginning of every regular City Council meeting, the Council would like to invite members of the public to join us in a moment of silence. You could please? Thank you very much, and next item.
Take us on to approval of the agenda.
Okay, you have an agenda in front of me.
So move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close extension? Next item.
We have no closed session items under Section Three, which will take us to Section Four, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item four-point-one, which is a proclamation recognizing May twenty-nineteen as Lupus Awareness Month. And if I could ask, sir, cover and representatives from the Lupus Foundation to step up to the podium.
So I have a proclamation here. Rather than reading through all of the whereas's, I'll just hit kind of the high points or the low points or the important points, let's call them. And that is that nearly one and a half million Americans have been diagnosed with lupus, and each year another one hundred thousand men, women, and children will be diagnosed. It is two to three times more prevalent among people of color, including African-Americans, Hispanics, Asians, and Native Americans. It is more likely to affect women than men, and early diagnosis and proper treatment are critical not only to the improvements of the quality of life but to the survival rate of lupus sufferers. And so now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims May twenty-nineteen as Lupus Awareness Month and calls upon all residents of the City of Elk Grove to unite on this day in showing of support. Signed this twenty-second day of May. Thank you so much, and please, if you'd like to say some comments, we certainly appreciate them. Thank you so much. There you go.
Thank you.
And if you'd turn around here, Kristen would like to take a picture. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Sarah Cover, and I am one of the one-point-five million Americans diagnosed with lupus, and that's about sixteen thousand new cases a year. I know that just by looking at me and my fellow friends up here that we don't look like we have this chronic debilitating disease, a disease whose symptoms range from joint pain, extreme fatigue, hair loss, cognitive issues, and physical impairments that affect every aspect of our lives, not to mention cardiovascular disease, strokes, disfiguring rashes, and did I mention the painful joints? Our lives and our diagnoses are filled with doctor visits, medications with extreme life-altering side effects, tests, canes, walkers, wheelchairs, visual aids, along with fear, pain, and anger. And this is after our diagnosis. It takes the average lupus patient six years to be diagnosed. That's six years of being told that it's all in your head, that you need to see a psychiatrist, or in my case, that I have allergies. Lupus strikes mostly women of childbearing years, that's fifteen to forty-four. And while lupus is a very widespread disease, awareness is seriously lacking, especially in that age group, and that is unacceptable as that is the age group that is most effective. Seventy-three percent of Americans between the ages of eighteen and thirty-four either haven't heard of it or know very little about it. And this is the age group, like I said, that is most acceptable. I mean, Benlistah is the only medication in the last fifty years that has even been approved for and accepted by the FDA for the treatment of lupus. That's fifty years that we've been without. And me and my fellow warriors here run the Sacramento Lupus Support Group, and we will strive every month to give everyone who is newly diagnosed the strength and courage to continue on their journey because, after all, we may have lupus, but lupus doesn't have us. So thank you so much.
All right, next presentation.
The Item four-point-two, which is a presentation on expanded polystyrene styrofoam.
Hello, everyone, and welcome. Today, we are speaking about expanded polystyrene. Me and my fellow groupmates have been researching about how styrofoam affects our environment, and we want to make a difference. Together, we believe that environmentally appropriate food containers can help our beautiful city of Elk Grove move towards a brighter, greener future. The next speaker will be speaking about how, we'll be speaking about the question everyone has on their minds tonight. What is styrofoam truly? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chisram, and I'm here to speak to you about what styrofoam truly is. Expanded polystyrene, more commonly known as styrofoam, is very good for insulation. It is known to be very lightweight since it is made mostly out of air. But there is one toxic chemical that is in styrofoam. It is called styrene. Styrene is in seedy cases, flour arrangement, cups, plates, and much, much more. And this could leave some potential impacts for our aquatic ecosystems, our human health, and our animals. And a peer of mine would like to talk about one of those impacts.
For our student presenters, if you just pull open the keyboard, you can actually advance the slides on the presentation. Just use the arrow keys, you'll get there.
Hello, my name is Amrit Apel. Styrofoam is very harmful for our health, and styrofoam needs to be limited. Styrofoam is made up of a chemical called styrene. How many people here actually know what this chemical is doing to our health? Just a raise of hands. As you can see, many people here don't even know what chemical we are consuming, and we have no idea what this chemical is doing to our health. Styrene is causing cancer, hearing loss, and impaired memory. Styrene is very harmful to our health. Our seniors are in danger. Styrene is causing the Parkinson's disease, which is very well-known in seniors. Seniors are most likely to get the Parkinson's disease. We need to ban styrofoam. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Braylee Meyer, and continuing on to what my fellow classmate Amrit said, making styrofoam is dangerous. So many chemicals are used. These chemicals have so many negative impacts, such as blistering, irritation, reproductive problems, cancer, or even death. Manufacturing styrofoam is causing so many lives. I'm sorry, I just, I don't understand. Why are we using this harmful substance when there's so many safer and more cost-effective alternatives? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Miriam Nikine, and another way we can understand the harmful factors of EPS is by looking at its nature and how it affects the environment. EPS takes forever to biodegrade, so we are going to have this toxic and harmful substance around us for a long time if we don't limit the use of it. Disasters like the Great Pacific Garbage Patch could happen. The Great Pacific Garbage Patch is twice the size of Texas and contains pieces of broken-up styrofoam. Not, this harms animals because if an animal mistakes styrofoam for food, they can accidentally ingest it and die. This harms, generally the mess that we have created through the use of styrofoam harms not only us but animals and plants as well. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amrita Kaler, and adding on to what Miriam said, I'll be talking about how EPS affects aquatic ecosystems. So EPS has many toxic pollutants in it. One of them is called DDT, and it's highly poisonous to marine life. It not only affects their brains but also their hearts, and it results in their deaths. Unfortunately, marine life sees EPS as food rather than a threat, so they just continue to eat the styrofoam that's inside of the oceans. Eating EPS actually blocks their digestive systems, and it leads to starvation, but many people don't know this, and millions of species are dying because of this. Our city actually contributes to this mess because every day, people are throwing styrofoam into nearby lakes and rivers, and that all flows down to the sea where marine life has easy access to it. In a current report, the UN explained how one million species are projected to go extinct because of human interference with nature. That's an absurd number. That means biodiversity will decrease. There will be a lack of plants, a lack of trees. That will not only affect humans but other species as well, and might even cause them to go extinct. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sumaila Hamas, and I'm here to take all of that information and bring it back to us, specifically our relationship to the DART Container Corporation. So DART is the largest foam cup manufacturer in the world, not just the United States. This is a global organization that is a multimillion-dollar company that profits directly of our use of styrofoam. And they're also one of the biggest opposition forces against styrofoam bans across the nation. They're involved in a lawsuit in New York and San Diego right now against their styrofoam bans, and they have contracts with local governments across the country in order to limit the use of the styrofoam ban to help our environment. And Elk Grove has a contract with DART. Now, in twenty-seventeen, we were having the same conversation that we're having today. In our city plan, we make it a priority to limit our contribution of solid waste to landfills, and we've actually pinpointed EPS as one of the most problem plastics in that contribution to solid waste. And so, we were having that conversation. Should we just get rid of it? Should we keep it? What are we gonna do? DART came in and they gave us another option. They said, "We're gonna recycle your styrofoam for free. You just have to promise that you're not gonna ban it from Elk Grove." Now, at first, in first light, it seems like a great option, but in reality, there's a lot of ifiness with that contract. For one, they actually can't recycle any styrofoam that has been contaminated by food waste, so those takeout containers and coffee cups and the styrofoam that we're using on a day-to-day basis, that's the biggest problem in this community, actually isn't recyclable and is still ending up in landfills. But that's not really being told to our citizens, so a lot of people are recycling them anyways and contaminating good recyclables and getting them sent to landfills as well. So we're actually increasing our waste that's being sent to landfills, which is literally against our city plan. Another problem with the DART contract is that DART is not some objective bystander. They're a corporation that is making money off of our use of styrofoam, and so by signing this contract and having this, oh, we won't ban styrofoam, it's actually making them money. So we can't exactly trust them to have the community's best interests or the environment's best interests at heart. Think about DART as a tobacco company that's coming into Elk Grove and saying, "Hey, we'll give you all free inhalers as long as you can guarantee that someone in your community smokes a cigarette every day." Now, obviously, that's not gonna solve the larger problem, lung cancer. Now, DART is that tobacco company. They're not solving the larger problem here, styrofoam pollution. So we need to cut our contract with DART. It's been a year, and now, within thirty days, we give them some notice, and then we can get out of it. And that is a solution that needs to happen. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Srilenki Pauli. I'm here to present on the alternatives to styrofoam. Many online vendors offer a hundred percent biodegradable and compostable products. These are produced using plant-based products such as sugarcane and corn resin. This is better for the environment as it does not produce as many toxins as styrofoam does when it's being made. For example, let's take soup cups. Soup cups is way more cheaper than styrofoam ones. It's better for the restaurants as they have more money to save, and it's better for their customers and their health. Let's take five thousand styrofoam cups. It only costs twenty dollars more to buy five thousand plastic ones. Is the price, is this price difference really worth the price of our health? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tara Jose. I was in charge of talking to local Elk Grove businesses about their use of styrofoam. Talking to these businesses, I've seen the same usual pattern. Depending on how much, on what type of food they use, that implements how much styrofoam they have. But overall, compared, they only use about twenty to thirty percent of styrofoam out of the entire variety of containers they have, a small portion. One owner even told me that she tries to limit the amount of styrofoam she uses because it actually affects how professional their business looks. What most of these business owners are concerned about, especially the new ones, still is the cost. But at the same time, talking to them, you've, you notice that they are aware of how our environmental needs must meet the changing times. They remain positive, and they are open to progressive change. These are the businesses that we've been supporting for a long time. We, we've go to that, we've been there for years. We wanna keep going, and we wanna keep supporting them and seeing them thrive. In turn, they have shown to us that they are concerned about the planet's health and our health personally. For example, the statewide ban on straws. After this, many of the restaurants I've seen, they've actually slowly, steadily strayed away from styrofoam, and they're ready for new regulation. But the matter of the fact is that they won't change, they won't cut out styrofoam entirely without some form of law, and that's where you, the council, have to come in. They, and we, are all waiting for your decision. Thank you.
My name is Matthew Cranny, and I will be talking about the effects that the bans had on other cities. The process of banning styrofoam from our environment has already begun. Many major cities, such as L.A. and San Diego, have already banned styrofoam, and they are just a few of the hundred-and-twenty total Californian cities. The increase in cities switching to a limited use of EPS is a trend that is becoming more and more popular in California. The City of Davis in twenty-seventeen banned styrofoam. They originally predicted that it had cost three thousand dollars to reach out to businesses, but it ended up costing them much less. The entire state of Maine has already banned styrofoam, and Maryland is considering a ban. In a few years, this could be us. Instead of waiting for that time to come, we should help lead the change to preserve our city and the environment. Thank you.
My name is Loretta Gonzalez, and as my peer previously stated, Elk Grove should take action like our fellow Californians and Americans in this switch, since one of our city goals is to reduce or restrict the use of EPS. From the City Council's own words in a two thousand seventeen staff report, alternatives such as bamboo, corn, or paper-based products are more accessible and recyclable than single-use styrofoam. Our city has addressed this issue before and will continue to push for a healthier and more environmentally appropriate alternative if action is not taken. Thank you.
So like Matthew just talked to you about, hundreds of cities in California have already implemented a styrofoam ban, and it's really important for us to look at those ordinances in order to really understand what we're pushing for here and what we're trying to do. So the biggest issue when discussing a styrofoam ban is its effect on local businesses and restaurants in our community, and it's important to understand that these ordinances are literally structured to help local businesses transition, not hurt them. So yes, there will be an economic factor in this change. Yes, maybe some businesses will struggle, but we're here for them, and we're not trying to hurt them. Smaller businesses have more time to phase out styrofoam, and it's very equitable. So this change isn't gonna be a snap, and all of a sudden there's no styrofoam anymore, and you have to pay fines. It's a slow transition that is working to help businesses handle that change and help the environment as well. And that kind of concludes our presentation. All we're here to ask is for you to listen to what we're saying. We had the courage to come up here and ask you for a change, and so now it's your time to make a courageous decision and listen to us. Please take action. Thank you.
First, I wanna, I wanna thank all of you students for researching so hard on this particular topic. Thank you for coming out, and thank you for consistently, you know, working on this. If you hang on, there's gonna be a section, Section Seven, and I believe, hopefully, we will be able to discuss that at that point, but, you know, please hang around and don't go anywhere, so, okay? Thank you. Right, next item.
The next item would be four-point-three, the Republic Services Annual Update.
All right, well, we're not done talking about trash and recycling yet. All right, good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Hume, council members. As most of you know, I'm Anna Rulon with Republic Services, your friendly neighborhood recycling and trash company. I was formerly the recycling coordinator with Republic Services, and I am presently the municipal administrator, so I now manage the contract with Elk Grove to make sure all your residents are getting everything we promised them. So, I'm here to give you guys the annual twenty-eighteen update. Before I jump into all the community outreach and public education that we did last year, I wanted to touch on a few out-of-the-ordinary things that happened last year. So the first one, which I'm sure you heard of, especially if you watch the news, had to do with China. At the beginning of twenty-eighteen, China, who is the largest importer of recycling worldwide, stopped accepting the millions and millions of tons of recycling that they were accepting, and they got a lot more strict about what they would accept. So as you can imagine, that had a ripple effect across the whole world, not just here in Elk Grove, not just Republic Services, but the whole entire solid waste industry. So over the past year and a half, we've been learning and growing and adjusting to that. Another thing that happened last year, if you talk to any business owners, business leaders in Elk Grove, I'm sure you've heard of Assembly Bill eighteen-twenty-six, though I doubt that most of your constituents refer to it so properly. They probably call it that annoying organic food waste law that they're required to comply with. So Assembly Bill eighteen-twenty-six has to do with getting our organic waste out of landfill so that we're producing less greenhouse gases. We've been working with lots of cities and businesses, not just in Elk Grove but the greater Sacramento area, to haul away that organic waste and do responsible stuff with it. And lastly, something that happened in twenty-eighteen, which is very exciting, was that Republic Services and the City of Elk Grove reached a new milestone in our relationship. We started a new contract that went into effect on July one of last year. So let's talk about that. In twenty-eighteen, your residents received all of the following services as part of their bimonthly bill that they paid. So we have curbside trash, biweekly recycling and green waste curbside pickup. Your residents can have additional recycling and/or green waste bins, up to three. They have appointment-based, home-generated Sharps pickup. We collect used oil and oil filters curbside. We now collect household batteries curbside. This was one of the new additions to the contract. We now have three, that's right, not one, three bulky waste pickups a year, and it is conveniently scheduled by your resident, not by us. This has been extremely popular. We actually had this go into effect a little bit before the contract last year, and I cannot tell you how busy my bulky waste pickup staff has been. Your residents are thrilled with this new addition to the contract. We also have free composting workshops. If your residents call within the first three hours of your newsletter going out, because they are that popular, they fill up almost immediately. We have free compost available to residents. We pick up Christmas trees. We pick up and recycle holiday lights. We let your residents bring a truckload of whatever they'd like to the transfer station once a year for free to drop off. And of course, we have assistance for your elderly and physically limited residents. So one of the, I think, the coolest things that we do in the city is presentations to students. We do educate students of all ages, but for the most part, we talk to second, third, and fourth graders, and we talk to them about, about the four Rs: reduce, reuse, recycle, and rot. Last year, I personally spoke with over fifteen hundred students across sixty-one classrooms. I talked to the kids about the cycle of waste, what happens to an item once they drop it in a bin. I talked to them about the importance of reducing all kinds of waste and recycling, how to properly sort all of their items into the bins, specifically what bins are available in, at that school and in that classroom. I talked to them about the natural decomposition of food and green waste, whether it's in a landfill or if we're composting it. And of course, we talk about the detrimental effects of littering to our natural environment, especially in the ocean, and to all other living organisms in the world besides humans. I recently passed the baton off to my new colleague, Brandon. He's just taken over these presentations. So last year was my last year doing it. Well, this year as well. All right, so we had three composting workshops in twenty-eighteen. We offer them three times a year. These are awesome. The lady who is the instructor is very knowledgeable. All of the residents who are SCP on time and attend get free handouts, information. They get a free bin provided by the city, and then a bag of compost to take home. Last year, we had the Trim Your Waste campaign, where I personally got to dig through recycling bins and award households money if their recycling bin was contamination-free. And one thing I'll point out is that one of the biggest contaminants we get in the recycling bin is styrofoam. My next four slides are lists of all the events that we participated in. I am not gonna read all of those events, but as you know, we participate in city events, local nonprofit events. We participate by having a booth, giving out information. Sometimes we sponsor monetarily. Sometimes we sponsor by giving free services, recycling trash, food waste, to the event. Sometimes we just do a raffle prize. So, more lists of events. Last year was awesome because we got the Amgen Tour in Elk Grove, which was a great event. I worked with the city so that we got trash recycling and food waste out there. More events, lots of golf tournaments, and then of course, we'd like to partner with the city to do the Elf Grove Float for the Dickens Fair Parade. All right, so for the past few years, we've been doing customer satisfaction surveys. What was great about twenty-eighteen was that we had more than double the participation that we are used to. We had over four hundred seventy people take this survey, and we owe a lot of that to social media. Social media is just a super-efficient way for us to get all of your residents' input. Another highlight is that our satisfaction has been going up over the past three years steadily, so we received the best score thus far of almost eighty-eight percent satisfaction from the four hundred and seventy-one participants. And of course, we And of course, we gave a resident $100 just to incentivize people to take the survey. So now is a part of my survey where I throw really boring numbers at you. So this slide shows all of the tonnage that was landfilled from your residents in 2018. So curbside, about 42,000 tons of trash. We picked up 370 yards of illegally dumped material around the city. And then of the bulky items, we landfilled 1,000 tons of it, which is about a quarter of the tonnage that we picked up bulky-wise. On this slide, I have all of the material that was diverted away from the landfill, so recycled or reused or turned into something else. Green waste, 21,000 tons. Bulky items, about 3,200 tons was actually diverted. 11 and 1/2 ton, 1,000 tons of recycling, 13,000 gallons of used oil, 3,000 used oil filters, 60 tons of appliances, 36 tons of e-waste, and 287 Sharps containers curbside. We strive for 42% diversion at a bare minimum. We always want to go higher if possible, and our average for 2018 was about 42 and 1/2% diversion, which is really good. If you compare that with nation averages, that's awesome. Another thing which I didn't put in this presentation, but I wanted to mention, was that we always expect contamination in the recycling bin. There's always going to be a certain amount that we have to take out of the recycling bin and put in a landfill. And last year, your residential average was less than 10% contamination, which might not sound like anything to you, but that's actually phenomenal. If you compare that to nationwide averages, even local averages of other jurisdictions, 10% and lower contamination is just amazing. So you guys should be really proud of your residents. I'm really proud of my team because I know a lot of the campaigns that we do is to decrease our contamination in the recycling bin. So lastly, I would just like to thank city council, city staff, of course, all of the residents and community members for our ongoing partnership, and if you guys have any questions for me, I am available. And that is all.
Any questions? No questions? Perfectly clear. Thank you. Right, next item.
And for the next item, that'd be item 4.4, Proclamation Recognizing May 2019 as Historic Preservation Month. I'd ask attendees that are members of the Historic Preservation Committee if you could come up to the podium and meet Councilmember Sue.
Hi, how are you doing? Good to meet you. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, yes, hi. Thanks for being here. Hi. Good evening. Okay, yeah, I know you. Well, I'm glad there's a lot of young people in the audience, because, you know, similar to knowing where you came from, it's important that we remember the historic buildings that were once throughout our landscape here in the city. Comes to mind for me is the recent fire at Notre Dame in France, and that was tragic for a number of reasons, you know, religious, but also because of the historical significance, I think, that that building had over time. And while we don't have maybe something as like Notre Dame, you know, we still have over 80 properties here in the city that have historical significance. So it's our pleasure to recognize this month as Historic Preservation Month, and I'll just say quickly here that the City of Elk Grove, including the Historic Preservation Committee, seeks to protect, preserve, rehabilitate, and restore historic resources within our community to reinforce Elk Grove's roots and identity. And now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims May 2019 as Historic Preservation Month, encouraging during our community to delve into our collective history, learn our proud heritage, and embrace and share our many traditions, and thank all of you for your work for helping us do all of that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of city council. Antonio Abloh, your planning manager. And as your planning manager, I've had the opportunity to serve as the city liaison to the Historic Preservation Committee for the past year and a half. Through that opportunity, I've had a chance to learn a lot about the City of Elk Grove, both from the Historic Preservation Committee and the Elk Grove Historical Society. If you ever want to know the history of Elk Grove, a member of our HPC or the Historical Society, they have no shortage of knowledge about our community and are always willing to talk to anybody about the history of our community. Through my position as liaison to the HPC, I've had been able to tour and survey a number of our historic buildings and sites, not just in Old Town, but throughout the city. These resources are invaluable parts of Elk Grove history, not just because of their architectural importance, but because of their cultural importance to our history as a city. Preserving these resources ensures a continuing link to Elk Grove's past and helps secure a thriving future. Though some of those resources are no longer utilized for their original intent, we will strive to ensure that the rehabilitation and reuse of those buildings respects our community's heritage. And we do have the Historic Preservation Committee here tonight to present to you their annual report coming up next, and does any member of the HPC want to address the council and the audience there?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. It's always a pleasure and honor to be here, and thank you to our preservation committee for always helping out so much. This evening, I'm giving the annual report. My name is Megan Daniel-Ming, and this is just our annual update. So I'm going to go through the slides here with you. We have onboard with us members, myself, Dennis Boucher, Gurjinder Ranawa, Daniel Tarnaski, Peggy Forseth Andrews, Daljit Singh Sandhu, and Brian Van Landt. So the purpose of the committee is to identify, designate, protect, enhance, and perpetrate the use of historic resources. Historical resources include buildings, structures, objects, sites, districts, cultural landscapes, and travel cultural resources in the city that reflect special elements of the city's heritage and cultural diversity. Our authority is to provide formal recommendations on alterations to historical resources to the Development Services Director, Zoning Administrator, and Planning Commission, and also to provide formal recommendations to the city council on the designation of historical resources. A few of the projects we worked on this year include the Railroad Street Rehabilitation Project, and this building was presented to us, and the HPC had some concerns, including things such as the shape and size of the awning and things of that nature, and it was actually sent back, and they worked on it and presented it to the committee again, and it was approved and moved forward. The big project we worked on this year, and these are some examples of some of the work that our volunteers and members did, was take pictures, and it was a historic resource survey, and this is the basis for identifying historically important properties in Elk Grove. So for the survey, it's done through a certified local government grant. We surveyed 79 resources and surveyed and photographed 79 resources. We also did two potential historic districts that were surveyed, Valley High Country Club and Williamson Ranch Subdivision. Here's a picture of us, the volunteers that day, including HPC volunteers, city staff, and Michael Baker International. And the last thing I'll touch on is our annual training that we hold for our HPC members. It's to maintain our certified local government status and also to meet the requirements of the Secretary of Interior Standards, and also for cultural and architectural preservation. And that's all I have. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? No questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item.
Take us on to Section 5, Public Comment.
Public Comment. Remember, folks, if I could ask you to stick to your three minutes, two minutes, you get the yellow warning light. Please sum it up in the last minute. Let's try to get through everyone. There's a number of speakers sign up to speak, so let's be respectful. First speaker is Mark Graham. Mr. Graham, comment up. Following Mark Graham is Mike Holte.
And Mr. Mark Graham had submitted a PowerPoint presentation to accompany his comments. He submitted it within the 24-hour policy, and those are available for his use.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Mark Graham. I live in Elk Grove. There are 20 Elk Grove residents who support the proposed ordinance that I sent you a couple weeks ago, which is to change the council's rules so that a speaker could yield his or her time to another speaker during public comments. 20 residents so far. I will send you a list of those names. This is the, the city signed a contract with William Hammett, the engineer, that said he would make a presentation at the community workshop that would cover the human health effects of exposure to radio frequencies. He based his entire portion of that part of his presentation on this standard. You didn't hire him to talk to you about this standard. You hired him to talk to you about the scientific research, and he excluded everything except for this. The question is, did he present it accurately? We're going to find out tonight. First sentence of the document is right here. I sent you this, but please take a moment to read it. I've added the emphasis, "established adverse health effects." Also on page one, the purpose of that standard, it's right there in front of you. Please take a moment. Once again, "established adverse health effects," "established adverse effects to human health." I don't think he mentioned that phrase once. There's a definition in that standard. This is how the IEEE defines it. It's kind of long and involved, but I've highlighted the key parts for you in red. And I want to draw your attention to where it says there, where there is a consensus in the scientific community, and this is the last part of that definition. It's kind of long. Out of all the health effects that you can have from exposure to radio frequency radiation, IEEE says these are the only four that are established adverse health effects, and these are very severe. You would have to have an enormous amount of radiation exposure. So what did he, how did that discussion go? This is what he said. This is a quote from Bill Hammett at the presentation. He says, "What they find is there's no measurable risk at exposure levels equal to the standard or below." And then Councilmember Sue asked this question, and you have Hammett's answer. He presented it, in other words, as if in all the scientific research, there's no measurable risk. But he never mentioned the definition. The key thing is that it's measurable risk of what? No measurable risk of an established adverse health effect. And when you look at the definition that they, IEEE uses, of an established adverse health effect, it is an extreme definition. It is very narrowly drawn, and so he failed to tell you that, and by that, by doing so, he misrepresented the whole issue. I think for $3,000, you deserve better, and the people of the City of Elk Grove deserved better than to be misled. Okay? Thank you. Good night.
Next speaker is Mikey Holte. Following Mikey Holte is Becky Warren.
Thank you, Mayor, council. My name is Mikey Holte, District Director to Assembly Member Jim Cooper, and I'm here on his behalf today. We're always encouraged about the city's future when we see bright, young people being involved, particularly encouraged by their commitment to making us a more sustainable city. The reality is that we just would encourage the students to work with stakeholders for solutions that will actually reduce our waste, and the city has major benefits for residents. DART is actually a local manufacturer based out of Lowdi. They employ a number of Elk Grove residents, and they provide free-of-charge drop-off residents' foam material. This foam material is food containers and packaging material. Instead of dumping this into landfills, it's being recycled. What's even greater is that it's being recycled locally and then shipped to secondary markets who could potentially use this material for a variety of recycled products, such as picture frames. Since the drop-off program started about 17, 18 months ago, DART has collected and picked up over 2,000 pounds of foam material, including food service containers. As you know, foam is a very light material. 95% of it is air, so that's a lot of material that's been saved and recycled out of our landfill. Appreciate the proactive stewardship of DART and what they've demonstrated in our community, and hope that the city will continue this program and that we can work with the students, maybe even to see if they could tour the recycling facility in Lowdi and be happy to help facilitate that tour.
Thank you, Mr. Holte. Next speaker is Becky Warren. Following Becky Warren is Ronald Frankel.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm here, I represent, I'm one of the representatives here for DART Container. First, I just want to highlight, just to clarify, a couple of things. First, what you'll be handed out is just to make sure that you all know that the FDA has done study after study, and expanded polystyrene is safe for consumers to use for food service, and in fact, also, the Chief Medical Officer of the American Cancer Society quoted, "Consumers don't need to worry about polystyrene cups or food containers. I see no problems with polystyrene foam cups." So just wanted to highlight that for you. And then also, I wanted to just highlight too, that DART does recycle food foam containers every day at the Lowdi facility, and they are, you can, in the drop-off container, put the food containers in there, as well as the foam packaging, no problem. And then I also wanted just to clarify and point out that Los Angeles, the City of Los Angeles has not banned foam, and in fact, they recycle Plastics 1 through 6, I mean 7, and that allows actually expanded polystyrene to be put into their blue bins, so residents can actually recycle it just at the residential curbside. And then in addition, I just wanted to highlight that there is better ways definitely to reduce our litter and our, and our waste. A couple of things I wanted to point out as well is that foam food service containers is less than 1% of the waste stream, so it doesn't truly make a huge difference if you ban it, but what will, it will make a big difference is for small restaurants, the cost. The California Restaurant Association did a study where the alternative clamshell is 145% higher, according to this price comparison study that they did, and that would mean that would force higher costs. That could result Elk Grove being faced with Santa Monica-type of prices, where you're going to spend $15 for a cold turkey sandwich, or $5 for a small cup of coffee. That's, those are real facts. And then, and I don't think that anyone really wants to make that happen, so what we're encouraging is that we want to work with everyone, because I think we all want to reduce waste, we all want to reduce litter, and we think that programs like the recycling drop-off program really helps, because it also helps capture those polystyrene upstream before it becomes an issue in the waterways. So thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ronald Frankel is our next speaker.
Becky, sorry, Mayor. Becky?
Come on back.
I heard Mr. Holte mention about the kids possibly doing the tour. Is that something you'd be interested in?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And actually, the warehouse supervisor, Ronald, he can, he was also going to extend that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Absolutely. Take a tour of the facility and learn about exactly how they recycle every day.
I'd like to learn that, too. If you guys would.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes.
On up is Frankel. Following Mr. Frankel is Lauren Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, and Casuma's Oaks High School community members. My name is Ronald Frankel, and I am both a proud resident of Elk Grove and a warehouse manager at the DART Container Lowdi Facility. We employ several hundred employees, many who live here, right here in Elk Grove. I love my job because I work for a company that not only manufactures a quality product, but also cares about environmental stewardship. We have regularly participated in- We have regularly participated in American River cleanups, and the company has donated, donated drop-off containers, and handled the pickup of used foam containers and packaging in Elk Grove and other communities across the state. This is at no cost to taxpayers. In fact, the foam drop-off here in Elk Grove has collected and recycled 2,275 pounds of foam material in the past 18 months. This is not just packaging material, as our facility in Lodi also recycles food containers. This is helping to reduce landfill waste and litter. As a local business, we are, we are here to offer to the students here today a tour of our facility. They can learn about what we do and how foam is recycled every day, which can then be remanufactured into a variety of products, such as picture frames and crown molding. We appreciate the leadership of the City Council of identifying effective ways, such as drop-off locations, and makes recycling more accessible for our residents. Thank you.
Okay. Next speaker is Lauren Scott. Following Lauren Scott is Matt Sutton.
Hello, good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Lauren Scott, and I am with the American Chemistry Council. Our association includes the Plastics Food Packaging Manufacturing Group, which represents the leading suppliers and manufacturers of all types of food service product, packaging products. Tonight's discussion has focused on some very important goals: reducing litter, reducing marine debris, and diverting materials from landfills. We agree that more can and should be done to meet these objectives, and we recently announced a commitment that all plastic packaging in the United States be recovered or recycled by 2030. Unfortunately, simply enacting a ban on polystyrene foam falls short of ensuring that potentially unintended environmental impacts are considered. Key questions we believe the Council should consider include: Will an ordinance reduce waste, or rather, replace it, one type of trash with another? Also, what are the environmental impacts associated with the manufacturing, distribution, use, and disposal of these alternative products? In some cases, alternatives to polystyrene are not recyclable, and often they require more energy and water to produce, and are heavier and require more fuel to transport. Are likely replacement products able to be recycled or composted within the state's existing infrastructure? And do viable end-use markets exist for these recycled materials? Alternatives may also present serious cost implications for the city, its vendors, businesses, and consumers. Rather than focusing on one material type, an effective solution needs to be material neutral, and focus on increasing the recycling and recovery of all food service packaging materials. To this end, ACC supported statewide legislation in the form of SB 1335 that establishes a requirement that all food service packaging used in state facilities be reusable, recyclable, or compostable. Signed into law, the bill directs the Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery, or CALRECYCLE, to establish a process for determining the types of food service packaging that can be used at state facilities. SB 1335 also requires CALRECYCLE to maintain a list of these approved products, which they have determined are indeed reusable, recyclable, or compostable. Prior to adopting any, any local ordinances, ACC encourages the City of Elk Grove to allow CALRECYCLE and their regulatory process to be finalized. CALRECYCLE's comprehensive assessment of food service packaging issues, including a current market analysis, and a review of the recyclability and compostability of the various food service packaging products, may help inform local policies and purchasing decisions. Rulemaking is expected to begin shortly, with final regulations in place by January 2021. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share these comments.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Matt Sutton. Following Matt is Hattie Partington.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Matt Sutton. I'm with the California Restaurant Association, and we represent a lot of the community-based restaurants throughout the state, but certainly here in Elk Grove. We definitely, I can't say enough, I think the passion and the presentation by the students and the questions and issues raised, it's great to see. I love it. I wish I was that active. So, appreciate the commentary, and just wanted to comment a little bit. As the end-users, we are the small restaurants, and we are the end-users of all food packaging. We take litter, we take marine debris, aquatic debris, all debris, very seriously. That's why you often see restaurants partnering in local communities on litter abatement projects, river cleanups, ocean cleanups, adopt-a-highways, things of that nature. So, it's an issue we pay a lot of attention to. Again, we are the end-user of the product. Unfortunately, litter bugs don't choose which products they're going to just throw on the street, or the rivers, or the beaches. So, that's, that's a problem, and that's not really one we can address. So, what can we do? We're hugely supportive of compostable and recyclable food packaging. And we've done a lot of work on that, certainly at the state level, but at the local level as well. And so, one thing that we think is incredibly important is how these products are treated in the end. And we don't get involved in picking and choosing amongst winners and losers of packaging products. The, the fact of it is, restaurants use different packaging for different purposes. And so, when it comes to the discussion on polystyrene, a lot of restaurants choose to use it for the functional integrity of the packaging. Now, it depends what they're serving. If they're serving heavy dishes with sauces and things like that, often you need a heavy packaging with that insulation. Some of the other products, it does eventually leak through the bottom, and that gets consumers a little bit upset. So, these are all things that have to go into the consideration. Cost is certainly there, but there's the real functional issue with a lot of the food packaging. So, to the extent these are recycled at the end of their life, we think that's fantastic. We've worked very hard at the state level to work on food packaging. It was mentioned earlier, there's a new state bill that we supported that looks and requires all food packaging to be recyclable or compostable on state facilities. And so, the idea with that project is that if that works and is successful, then maybe we can transfer it to all food establishments on and off state properties. So, that's a longer-term approach that we are super engaged in. We're going to be involved in the regulatory effort to make it happen, and we think that that type of global perspective is a very good way to go. And then, I see my time is running out, so the last thing I'd say is, I've heard mention of the tour. I've, I've gone on the tour. It, it's fantastic. And so, what you see is, you see these products that have been used by restaurants and others, that come back and are recycled into secondary products. And what I mean by that is, I've seen picture frames, I've seen baseboards, chair rails, things that you see in buildings as part of these products being recycled. So, that's a full-circle recycle that we think's pretty exciting. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hattie Partington. Following Hattie is Delaney Kingston.
Good evening. My name is Hattie Partington, and I am a member of Elk Grove High School's Environmental Club. I'm here in support of the rest of my club, Casumas Oaks Club, and their proposed ban on styrofoam. As you know, styrofoam is used commonly in Elk Grove. Most places that use styrofoam, like my school, Elk Grove High School, buy styrofoam because it is cheap. But personally, I don't believe that one's desire to save money should be prioritized over the health of our city and our world. It has been argued that styrofoam is being recycled in our city, and that styrofoam has no hazards to our health, but that is not true. My peers told you about that earlier, so I won't really say anything about that. But also, there are other options out there. My peers introduced many options to you as well. Many businesses in Elk Grove are willing to make the change. It might be a little hard. Like, one of my peers said, it won't be instant, but it's, you know, have a lot of benefits. And it was mentioned earlier that the cost of moving away from styrofoam would hurt local businesses, and that the cost of a cup of coffee would rise to $5. And I can't speak for anyone else here, but I definitely already pay $5 for coffee. And, and I would much rather pay a little more, knowing that my cup is made out of a material that isn't going to kill the earth, or really, I could just bring my own cup and contribute to less waste. So, if Elk Grove makes the change, I believe that we will become a role model, role model for other cities in California and all across the United States. So, as a member of an environmental club, as a concerned citizen of Elk Grove, and most importantly, as a young person who will suffer more than any of you from the effects of climate change, I ask that you take what we say, what we have said, and will continue to say into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Delaney Kingston. Following Delaney is Selena Enriquez. Selena, if you can get ready. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Delaney Kingston. I'm from Elk Grove High School's Environmentalist Club. Change is a scary thing. However, the change of policy with our styrofoam use is necessary for our city. Generally, most people know that styrofoam is terrible for the environment. My fellow students help details the atrocities that it's have done to the environment. Styrofoam is an unnecessary pollutant in our city. We need to stop making excuses. We need to take action. We need change. Stop viewing our environment as a separate entity and preventing our profit, our gain to increase our profit. Start prioritizing the future of the students who stand before you. My generation is committed to the three Rs, and what they're teaching nowadays, the four Rs: reduce, reuse, and recycle. Styrofoam has not been effectively recycled. Styrofoam is very hard to reuse. Therefore, the only option is to reduce it. During the students and citizens of Elk Grove, by reducing the amount of styrofoam that pollutes our environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Selena Enriquez. Following Selena is Tiana Hall.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Selena Enriquez, and I came here to show my support and gratitude for what my fellow peers and the Casumas Oaks and Elk Grove High School Environmental Clubs have done in order to initiate that conversation about what's going on with styrofoam. Now, I encourage local businesses to understand that this styrofoam ban will, A, not hurt their business profits, and B, will support the well-being of our citizens. I spoke to a local restaurant on Elk Grove Boulevard, Hokey Pokey. I spoke to the manager, John, and what he told me was that by switching to cardboard-to-go boxes, he actually saved money, and customers had personally approached him, saying how grateful they were that he took into consideration their health and the health of our community. I also know about this law called EPP, environmentally preferable purchasing. And what that is, is that government agencies should prefer to choose more environmentally sustainable packaging. However, I think we should change that law to be environmentally mandatory purchasing, because our health is really important, and we should take into consideration what our community wants. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Tiana Hall. Following Tiana is Barbara Washburn.
Hello, we're from Franklin High School, and we are part of a club that works to eliminate harmful products on our school, our community, and ultimately, our whole environment. So, every year, we host an annual creek cleanup, in which our school goes down into the creek right by our school, and we pick up all of the trash that we find in there. Last year, we had noticed a plentiful amount of styrofoam that was down in there, and so, we worked on a project to help eliminate that on our campus.
In order to ban styrofoam, we spoke with our district about the matter. We had the students take surveys to get their opinions about the topic, and we implemented new biodegradable cups that the student body got to vote for. Before this, we had, we used styrofoam cups for our school lunches, and we realized that it was harmful for our environment. Once they chose their favorite out of three cups, we spoke to the district, and now we have paper cups at our school.
We're still working to tackle the fight against styrofoam. We reached out to our district, again, in order to discuss implementing the cups at our feeder middle school. After discussing the issue again, our Health Food Services District Manager has agreed to help us with this. So, starting next year, both Franklin High School and Toby Johnson Middle School will be styrofoam-free. And so, as we work to continue this project across our district, we hope that you guys can continue this citywide and help us with this movement. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Barbara Washburn. Barbara Washburn. Following Barbara is Mackenzie Weiser.
My name is Barbara Washburn. I'm with the Laguna Creek Watershed Council, and I would first like to commend all the young people from schools for the fantastic leadership you are providing our community. Thank you very much. We know that, I'm, I'm representing the, the council, but some of you might know that I am a toxicologist by profession. And we know that styrofoam is toxic, both occupationally and environmentally. Styrofoam, styrene, which leaches out of styrofoam, when it is exposed to hot foods, not cold foods, but hot foods, is on the Proposition 65 list, identified as a carcinogen, at a concentration of 27 micrograms per day, super small, like the size of a piece of salt or less. I didn't have the time to research, well, what would drinking two cups of coffee out of styrofoam container actually expose somebody to, but that would be something worth, worth looking into. We, a human adipose tissue study that was conducted a number of decades ago, really, showed that in 100% of adipose tissue samples from across the nation, there was evidence of styrene. And that suggests that the leaching of, of styrene from styrofoam containers is, is a real fact. It is occurring. It is not simply an occupational issue. But even if it was just an occupational issue, it is still something of concern. As the students pointed out, 120 cities and counties in the state ban styrofoam in one form or another. LA County and City don't have a municipal ban on it, but what they do have is a ban in government facilities. So, it's not quite accurate the way it was portrayed before. What I would like to propose is that the city establish a committee to look at what actually would be the impacts and challenges faced with a styrofoam ban. Some of the questions you might look at are, what would be the actual cost? Because I have read things, such as the students just indicated, that the costs are no greater than using styrofoam, but that could be investigated. What actually leaches out in coffee cups? The environmental effects, I think, are well documented, so that would be easy to summarize. What is the efficiency of recycling? As some of the students have suggested, I, I question that styrofoam can be efficiently recycled. In other words, of the body of styrofoam that's out there, how much of it actually gets into that stream, I don't know.
Thank you, Barbara.
So, I would just like to suggest that a committee be formed and report back to the council in the fall with the facts and recommendations. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker is Mackenzie Weiser. Folks, just as a reminder, there are a number of speakers, so if you could, just stick to your three minutes. And I hate to interrupt, but I'm going to interrupt you once you hit three.
Mr. Mayor, Mackenzie submitted a slide, but she didn't do it within the 24-hour period. Can we waive that since?
It's Planning Commission matters, actually. George did not let me know that he hadn't submitted the slide, but here it is. My name's Mackenzie Weiser. It's up already, so we're good. My name's Mackenzie Weiser, Chair of the Elk Grove Planning Commission, and I would just want to back up what Barbara and everyone else has said. I have been beyond proud working with the youth that we have in our city. They are impressive by far. Just working with them and getting them ready to come here tonight has been probably the best thing I've done in the last five years of my career working on climate. So, I am pumped about that. But on another topic, if I don't use my time to educate Elk Grove on the ways we can get green, then I'm not doing my job here. And the way we're going to do that is, we're going to have workshop events throughout the city. Our first one, we're partnering with SMUD and the City of Elk Grove and Planning Commissioner George Murphy. We've been able to pull together an EV car show. We're going to do test drives, face painting, and you'll get free tacos if you test drive an EV. You've got to register online. We've got 181 people already registered to come out to the event. We've sent you all invites and haven't heard back. We hope you'll come and enjoy what we have to share with the city. We hope everybody in the city comes out and learns how to get EV ready. We're not going to do this in one step with styrofoam. We've got to do it in many steps. So, shuryo, this is not the end.
And I will be there, Mackenzie. Thank you. William Myers is our next speaker. Following Williams is Deanna Lilly.
I wanted to make the same suggestion. It's our
It's already made by Barbara about having a commission that works together. I just wanted to add that, working with the kids, working on this, I think that it would be a great opportunity for that to be, an experience includes the kids in that. You know, we could do a lot in this community, make internship, mentoring, capacity, you know, opportunities for these kids, and I think that would be a wonderful one to include them, okay? I hope I didn't hear tonight that some people are defending keeping this, polystyrene to make a buck at the expense of the public health and, you know, and the environment. I'm not sure if that's far, but I think we need to really look into that. I did go online, and there's no question about the toxicity, question under what circumstances of polystyrene, okay? There's no question that it can be completely replaced by other things. It's been done all the time, like San Francisco. I went over to Pete's, asked him what they do, you know? So people where they do have these laws, they just take this as a matter of course, and they do. Now, one important thing, a reason for having a regulation, is it sets a level playing field. If you have it throughout the city, then everybody has to follow it, and the people who decide they want to make it a little more investment aren't penalized by doing that. Everybody starts on the same playing field, and so it's fair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Next speaker is Deanna Malili. Follow Deanna is Kathy Engel.
Hello, council members. My name's Deanna Malili. I'm going to change the topic here a little bit. I have a kind of a public health safety concern for the Laguna West Stone Lake levy adjacent to the community, and I have a recommendation and a request. The Storm Drain Master Plan, page 109, states that the levy is protecting the community from potential flooding. Since the incorporation of Laguna West Stone Lake into the City of Elk Grove, I have not seen any levy maintenance. Per FEMA, levies require regular maintenance and periodic upgrades to ensure that they are maintained according to federal law. Risks with levies are real concerns. Even Sacramento is shoring up their levies. The public health and safety concern I have, if the levy fails, the Laguna West Stone Lake community, water will get contaminated, sewage will spill into the homes, lots, and businesses. Also considering the effect on I-5, which is a major economy driven interstate by truckers. I am recommending that FEMA comes out and inspects the levy condition and provides a report, recommendations to the city, and disclose to the citizens, especially since the council is considering increasing the population over in the Stone Lakes area and Laguna West. The population possibly by four thousand people, plus travelers, and adding a huge construction project adjacent to the levy, to which the levy could fail, which it's already decaying and deteriorating, but it could be at a faster rate. A couple of years ago, the Laguna Lake flooded and went over the sidewalks and down the streets. There were some home damage in the area. The water went all the way up my driveway and almost into my garage. I am concerned that my FEMA flood insurance may get jeopardized. Currently, there is a Stone Lakes Preserve Trail that is used by the community and my family. With the additional of population that could potentially increase there, that could cause more traffic and more walking and use on the trail and on or near the levy. Therefore, again, my recommendation and request of the city council is to have FEMA come out and survey, provide a report on our levy for the health and safety of the public and to ensure that the FEMA flood insurance does not get jeopardized. Thank you.
Deanna, Deanna, will you please give your contact information to Bob Murdock, our Public Works Director?
Yes.
So when we update our Storm Drain Master Plan, you could be part of that outreach.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Kathy Engel. Follow Kathy is Sonia Strong.
Actually, Sonia, can I go first?
Okay, Sonia Strong, come on up, please.
Hello, I'm Sonia Strong. I'd like to read a letter sent to Barry Broome from Darrell Don, dated June 22nd, 2018, regarding the Project MEDE, City of Elk Grove, response to RFI, Elk Grove Medical and Biotech Center. Dear Barry, the City of Elk Grove is pleased to provide a response to the above-mentioned RFI issued by the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. The city understands the client is a pharmaceutical manufacturing company that wants to establish a facility for manufacturing sterile injectable products for the global market. Additionally, we understand the project consists of approximately six acres of land to build a one hundred and thirty thousand square foot facility that will represent an estimated total investment of thirty-three million and total employment of two hundred and four jobs. After reviewing the search and site criteria, we have three exceptional sites to offer in Elk Grove for this project. The sites are all part of an emerging biotechnology and medical campus known as the Elk Grove Medical and Biotech Center, which is anchored by an existing fully accredited medical and pharmacy school, California North State University, CNU. CNU is one of only ten medical schools in California and only the fourth California school in the state to include accredited medical and pharmacy degrees on the same campus. CNU is rapidly expanding with plans to add dental and clinical psychology degrees in the near future and the development of extensive additional teaching, medical research, and manufacturing facilities. As part of that expansion, CNU, Greater Sacramento, and the city are working together to develop a world-class biotech park located on or adjacent to CNU's campus, representing an exceptional location for biotech companies to locate. The Biotech Center will include research, wet lab, manufacturing, office, and startup facilities for startup and more established companies and research institutions, seeking to benefit from the synergy between a biotech park and a quickly growing medical teaching and research school. The center is ideally located on the west side of Elk Grove along Interstate 5, approximately ninety minutes from Silicon Valley and San Francisco, Oakland, and is comprised of affordable greenfield development sites benefiting from willing public and private partners. The City of Elk Grove is one hundred percent committed to working with you and the proponents of Project MEDE to facilitate the relocation of this company. The Elk Grove City Council and staff are completely committed to growing the cities and the regional economy.
Your time is up. Kathy Engel.
Okay, Elk Grove, city council and staff are completely committed to growing the cities and the region's economy, and as such, we are in a position to develop a package of technical assistance and financial incentives proportional to the capital investment and employment impact of the project. So, if you can see, I'm not sure how to, can I change the, how do I get to the next page? There we go. So these locations, the location that, on Maritime, this was actually not owned by Alvin at that time. This information was shared with only a select few people, and in fact, it was not shared with the owner of that property. So the owner of that property sold it for probably less than she would have sold it for, had she known. So, now she is probably going to sue Elk Grove because it wasn't Alvin buying it, it was the city trying to bring people in, so the city's involved, so there's another lawsuit that we all get to pay for. And I'll finish up here. All, city assistance. All phases of the project will receive red carpet services to expedite all necessary government approvals under the city's Economic Development Project Review Team Program. Subject to terms to be negotiated, the city is capable of providing a financial incentive package for the project, including from, but not limited to, which doesn't make sense, the following programs. And then it goes on to list, well, the funds direct subsidy from the city's adopted economic development incentive program. A typical incentive structure may include an upfront amount followed by an annual amount per job created. There are some other things that list that are, I guess, typical things that they offer. But the FAST Plan Review, the city guarantees a ten-day turnaround for the first set of plan review comments. This is a pharmaceutical manufacturing, too. An issue is TI, a new construction building permits, on average in seven days. Permit simplicity allows businesses to obtain a tenant improvement permit for an existing building in one day. PAS, Pre-qualified Architectural Submittal System, is the city's program that speeds building permit issuance through the use of pre-qualified and certified architects and engineers. So I don't know if any of that is happening on this other project, but what I would like to say is, the fact that Barry Broome knew about this, Darrell Don did tell us that he frequently keeps things confidential, but apparently Barry Broome is like on the inside. Maybe I wanted to buy that property and make a bunch of money because I knew a hospital was going there. That would have been awesome. So, there's another thing, just one more thing we keep finding about what's wrong with this and how nobody told the people that live in this city. Barry Broome knows more than we do.
Kathy, I'd like to, I'd like to give you just a nickel's worth of free advice.
Okay.
There is no there there on what you just read, okay? I applaud everything about that letter. That's exactly what Darrell Don should be doing. He should be working in concert with Barry Broome in order to improve the economic development of the region. And it is completely unrelated to the hospital. So if you have issue with the hospital coming forward or how that project is being handled, that's an issue. But to keep dredging up these ancillary things, that, I mean, that is what our Economic Development Director is paid to do, exactly what that letter says. So I just, I think you're trying to, you're trying-
So, secret projects is that, so that people don't get what they should get for their land because other people get to buy it first, is that?
Then they're a bad business person. The land should have been appraised and the sales price should have been agreed to. That's a civil contract. That has nothing to do with the city. We didn't influence that in any way.
If certain people knew about this project MEDE and other people didn't, how is that? Okay.
So, if you don't want to heed what I'm saying to you, that's fine, but that's what, that's what that position is paid to do, is to drum up those kind of opportunities.
The whole idea behind Barry Broome and the GSAC is to market this region, right? Centene, which is a Fortune 500 company, they ended up in Natomas. I promise you, the similar process was made by their Economic Development Director providing potentially suitable sites. This is up to the company, whoever this was. I didn't see this, even though I noticed at the bottom, it's copied on city council, but I will tell you right now, I did not see this. I just asked Councilman Vice Mayor, he hadn't, he's never seen it either.
Can we ask if anybody else saw it?
I don't know, but my point, my point to you is this, he is marketing these sites. It is up to that company to then talk to these sites and call them up and say, hey, we'd like to be in your area because we understand what's going. That's the business, the private side that happens. So, this is, there's, Darrell, Mr. Don is trying to kickstart something. That's what Vice Mayor is alluding to, but the rest of it is a private transaction. We don't even know who this company is, you know? This is between Barry and, because Barry will receive leads, and I'll defer to you, Mayor, since you sit on the council, but my understanding is Barry will receive leads that we don't know about, and that they'll do these things. And they often do this because they don't, companies don't want everybody knowing that they'll come to town. The thing that Amazon did, this is a very unique situation, where Amazon publicly across the nation asking to bid and submit proposals, that's not what typically happens. So, this was, this was advertising our city in the best light possible. You heard business, you know, processes to get your permits and things, trying to highlight that we're a business-friendly city and trying to market potential sites. I, you know, I trust in other situations, he'll market SEPA, the Southeast Policy Area, as well, but there's a lot of then-private transactions that need to happen after that. So this is only, you know, the beginning of something. That's all I can tell you. I mean, that's, this isn't about alluding to any specific project, and the mention of California North State, they are a medical school, which I can tell you-
No, but they bought that property, you know that, right?
They did now, but I mean, when did, when did, this was in 2018.
They bought it before they made the announcement.
No, I'm saying this letter was from 2018.
Right, but the property owner didn't get this letter. She never heard of it. So, anyway, I mean-
So let's move on because we have a number of speakers lined up to speak, and we want to be respectful for, to everyone who's lined up to speak. Our next speaker is Esther Pritchard. Following Esther is Barbara Patterson.
Good evening. My name's Esther. This is my first time speaking in front of you guys, so bear with me. I've been a resident of Elk Grove, Stone Lake, since 2007. My husband and I worked in law enforcement when we first purchased our home. He was a police officer and I was a public safety dispatcher. Due to our professions and the dangers that came with our jobs, we surged to live in a community where we both felt safe to raise our family. That was the reason we fell with Stone Lake Community. It provided us with peace of mind, knowing that our family would always be safe. However, I do not feel that safety anymore, not with a Level 2 trauma hospital in our neighborhood. The safety of my family and my neighbors will be compromised, and that is something that I'm not okay with. From my work experience as a dispatcher, I was directed many times to make calls around hospitals, looking for suspects with injuries that might have checked themselves in, into our hospitals in the surrounding Sacramento area. Suspects as we know it are people that commit crimes and will take any measure possible to escape justice. Is this the type of activity that you want happening in our backyards? Have you considered the safety of the families and children in Stone Lake? My home is a place that my family and I consider a safe zone, but we will no longer feel that safety, and we feel that this type of activity happening so close to our home is a dangerous and a scary place to live. The very same chaos that many people like myself strive to avoid will be right in my backyard. Does the Elk Grove Police have the manpower to respond to the demanding calls that will be taking place in and or around the hospital? As a spouse of a police officer and from my professional knowledge as a dispatcher, I can attest to the fact that calls for service in and around hospitals increase. I found a number of disturbing calls of service myself in researching trauma hospitals. Some of those calls, some of the permanent calls surrounding trauma hospitals include possessions of narcotics, assault battery, traffic collision, warrant arrest vandalism, burglary, stolen vehicles, and et cetera. I'd like to know, how is the impact of increased service calls in staffing strength been assessed by our city and our police? Lastly, I'd like to urge you to listen to the concerns of our community. The information we are providing you really is a gift. Do the right thing before it's too late. Thank you, and that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Barbara Patterson. Barbara Patterson is our next speaker. Following Barbara is Constance Conlon.
I'm Barbara Patterson, and I'm a resident of Elk Grove in the Stone Lake area. I have been here since 2009, but my extended family has been here since 1930. So I'm well aware of what has happened here in Elk Grove. I was very concerned when the Elk Grove Police Union got up here and said they were in support of the CNU building of this monstrosity, totally ignoring what the many citizens of Elk Grove, especially in the West End, but others around the Elk Grove area, have said, and that they are against it. That must have been as a result of more contributions by Alvin Chung as he did to both Mr. Lee's and Mr. Soon's, I'm sorry, as he did to both Mr. Lee and Mr. Soon's campaigns. Does this guarantee a bias by the police department? Does this mean that they're becoming corrupt? Will they not give me the help I need? Should I have to call because I happen to be against this project? I believe the police department owes the citizens of Elk Grove a public apology for supporting their owners of this school. Dr. Chung is not an Elk Grove citizen. I'm not against having a hospital in Elk Grove. That would be stupid, and I am not stupid. That would be stupid and I am not stupid. The mayor and the council should be encouraging Dignity Health to get their hospital up as quickly as possible. The Economic Development Person, that's where he should be spending his money, so that we do have a good hospital here. We should give them as much assistance as they need. Both you, Mr. Lee and Mr. Soon, have publicly shown your vice support of this project, by having them come to your place and you using their place and accepting contributions to your campaigns. I believe that in good faith, you both, at least you two, and if anybody else has accepted contributions from him, should recuse themselves from any voting that has to do with this hospital. It is unethical that you would, um, vote for anything that has to do with this hospital since you have actually accepted money from this man. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. I appreciate that. First, I, I want to clarify the distinction between the Police Department and the Police Association. Uh, I think you made reference in your comments that the Police Department should apologize. The Police Department is a department within our city. The Association is an independent labor negotiation association. So, um, I want that, I want the record to show that that is the case.
But it represents the Police Department.
Yet, the, the other thing, no, it does not. It represents the, the officers and it is an association. But the other thing, Mr. Hobbs, and I've asked you this before, if you can chime in and clarify what the law says about campaign contribution and, and how that impacts electeds.
Sure. As the mayor and the council know, you do have certain obligations to report campaign contributions in your disclosure forms. That does not necessarily preclude you, it doesn't preclude you from voting for or against projects, not necessarily an indication of support or approval for that. There's simply a disclosure obligation that if you do receive campaign contributions from a certain person or entity, that those must be disclosed under appropriate circumstances. That way the public can take a look and see where certain campaign funds are coming from.
In addition to that, could you also clarify the distinction between, um, campaign contribution and what would create a conflict of interest?
So, campaign contributions generally are excluded from what we call Form 700s. The Form 700s are the forms that everybody on the, the council fills out, I fill out, that indicate things like gifts, income, those sorts of things. Campaign contributions are excluded from those, um, reporting obligations for purposes of conflicts of interest, perhaps because they are reportable in a different form, the, um, the campaign contribution forms, as opposed to the conflict of interest forms, which are Form 700s. The fact that you've received a campaign contribution does not necessarily disqualify you from participating in the decision from the source of the campaign contribution.
In what kind of instance would create a conflict of interest?
For instance, if you have a, a direct financial interest in the business, if you have an ownership interest in the business, if you're receiving, um, other income besides campaign contributions, excessive gifts, things like that could create a conflict of interest that could disqualify, uh, council member from voting on a project, generally speaking.
So let's say, let's say if I was part owner of the university, would that create a conflict of interest?
Well, it depends. Um, the, uh, it could. Uh, it could create a conflict of interest. The rules are somewhat tricky when it comes to that, how much ownership you have, is it a stock ownership, are you on the Board of Directors, how much say you have in it. Um, we would have to look at the detailed facts of those, they're very fact-specific inquiries. But to answer your question generally, if you did have an ownership interest, that could very well disqualify you from voting on the project.
But the mere fact that there are members of the board that made a contribution to a campaign, does that create a conflict of interest?
Not necessarily create a conflict of interest. It could, if you add certain facts, so again, I'm speaking very generally, but as a general proposition that, um, on the facts you provided, would not create a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Con- Constance Conley.
Back in 2004, um, just a few, few short years after we incorporated, a lot of us who were involved, um, had a vision for our city. And one of my visions was getting the youth of our city involved. So I came forward to public comment and proposed a youth commission. Mind you, that was in 2004. The council, um, didn't agendize it. I am not one to give up, as most of you know. I came back in 2005, same proposal. We need a youth commission. We need to get our youth actively involved in our city because they are our future. It counselled, once again, refused to agendize it, to form a youth commission. So in 2006, we do what citizens do and we needed change, so we made change. And we replaced two council members. Imagine, after they were sworn in, we came back again in 2006, beginning of 2007. Within, we proposed it again and low and behold, the council agendized forming a youth commission. Came back two, two weeks later and voted unanimously to form it. Now, I have to say, I couldn't be more proud when I wrote that proposal of these young people right here. Now, we're talking 15 years ago. Most of these either young people were either not born or they were toddlers. And look what we have before us now that are the future of our city. So, young people, I just want to tell you, you are the future of our city. You can get involved, stay involved, and I'll just tell you this. Does anybody know how old the mayor of Stockton is? I think he's in his early twenties. So, young people, keep that in mind if you want to take one of these seats up here someday.
Very well said. You know, the truth of it is that these seats are public seats and we only hold it for a short time. And I would hope that young people, just like the ones that we saw tonight, would some, some days step up. We're only guardians of this for the moment. So, thank you very much. We do not have any additional members of the public sign up to speak, so let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. A few items to report on. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we do have actually one opening right now on our Chief's Advisory Board. The application is available on the city's website, the city police department website, so we encourage members to go on there and take a look and, and get involved in the Chief's Advisory Board. Also, like, the, we have the Aquatic Center grand opening scheduled for this Saturday. The ribbon cutting will be at 10:00 AM, followed by opening to the public between 11:00 and 5:00. It'll be free of charge for that day for residents and members of the community to come out and, and take a look at our new wonderful aquatic center. Next Wednesday, we have the Neighborhood Summit from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock here in the city council chambers. Members of the public can come out and learn more about city services, ask questions, things that may be concerning to them in their own neighborhood. We'll have representatives from our police department, code enforcement, public works, planning, the school district, Consumers CSD, and others available to discuss and answer, ask questions. Speaking of recycling, uh, we have a mattress recycling event coming up on Saturday, June 1st, 10:00 to 2:00 PM here at City Hall. If you have an old mattress you want to recycle it, bring it down to City Hall. An exciting event coming up, uh, second year of Petapalooza returns on June 2nd. The city and the Consumers CFD have partnered with Sacramento radio stations again this year to bring it back. Festival for fur babies and their families. This free event will feature a concert from country superstar Chris Janson, as well as pop singer Andy Grammer, um, as well as a lot of different pet-friendly activities and exhibits. Look for more information on the city's Facebook page. A Regional Safety Day is coming up. Partnership between the Police Department and the Consumers Fire Department to host Regional Safety Day on Saturday, June 8th, at Elk Grove Park from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Free event will offer visitors of all ages the chance to learn about, more about the jobs of first responders and safety tips to protect their families through exhibits and demonstrations. Already mentioned this evening, uh, from Mackenzie Weiser, is the SMUD Electric Ride and Drive Event. It's coming up on June 8th from 10:00 to 2:00 PM here at City Hall. Participants have a chance to, to drive, test drive electric vehicles and, and get some free tacos. There's also an art dedication event coming up, uh, because a partnership between the city's Art Commission and the Elk Grove Fine Arts Center to host an evening reception immediately following the annual Elk Grove Art Tour on Saturday, June 8th. It's a busy day. This event will begin at 5:30 PM. We'll offer visitors a chance to appreciate and celebrate the new art pieces installed next to the Aquatic Center at the Commons at the Civic Center. Details, more details will be available on the city's website in the next few days. One final note, Memorial Day is next Monday. City hall, city offices are closed. We will be back on Tuesday, May 28th. Happy to answer any questions the council might have. Are there any questions? Are there no questions? Thank you.
All right, so, let's go straight into, um, council comments and reports. Councilman Detrick.
Thank you, Mayor. So since the last council meeting, I was gone, I was back on cap to cap. That's where the Metro Chamber of Sacramento puts together, from the capital of California, trip with usually about 350 people. We go back in lobby, back in Washington DC. There was over 200 lobbying appointments that were made. I happened to be on the Civic Humanities Team along with our city manager and we had the opportunity to, uh, view several hotels, as well as the new Audi Arena for the DC United Soccer Team. Beautiful, beautiful new complex. And, uh, to see the opportunity that they've created, not only with the arena, but what it's done for the economy back there, uh, with the retail and housing, uh, very, very informative and it ties into with, was mentioned earlier, the Aquatic Center opening this weekend, uh, where hopefully we can have a, not only a local, regional, but potentially a state and national draw for, uh, for major events, which would fill our hotels and restaurants and retail as well. I just wanted to comment on the, uh, all the high school kids that are here today. So it looked like a, is it a pretty equal divide between the Wolfpack and the herd?
No.
So if you, so if you're with the Wolfpack, raise your hands. Okay, how about with the herd? Ah, a little bit. Is Franklin? Oh, Franklin's here too. Okay, 'cause on, on the presentation it only showed Wolfpack and herd. But, uh, no, thank you guys for all coming out. Very, very educational. Uh, I, obviously there's, uh, both ends of the spectrum were talked about here tonight. I usually find somewhere the truth is somewhere in the middle. And I think the idea that, uh, both Bill Meyer and, uh, Barbara brought forward about putting together a committee, I would, I would support that if the rest of the council would, uh, support me on that. So I think that would be something that, uh, we should put together. And I think having, uh, youth, youth on there as well, maybe, uh, you know, one or two representatives from the youth groups, as well as possibly if Bill and Barbara would like to be involved, as well as some other experts.
So, council member, if I can suggest, why don't we have the item brought back for council direction rather than maybe giving guidance at the dais on a non-agendized item? Okay?
Perfect. I would support that, yeah. Let's bring it back and, and, you know, go, go ahead, Councilman Detrick, if you want to finish.
So, and just in, you know, rapid, thank, thank you for all of you coming out, 'cause obviously we had, uh, close to 20 speakers, uh, and the majority of them were tied into the same topics. And, uh, as was mentioned earlier about the youth commission, I, I've been a huge supporter of youth, youth commission from before I was on the council and since I've been on the council. So, again, really, really appreciate what you guys do, 'cause you are our future.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Councilmember Wayne.
Thank you, sir. In the interest of time, I will not go through all of the community events I went to, but I will, um, highlight our city manager, Mr. Beerman. I, I want to thank you for pulling together and involving not just the council and the community members, as well as our chief advisory board on the selection of the chief of police. I was able to drop by yesterday for the community meeting that you led and we had a little bit over 20 individuals and community leaders that were here that were asking some, some great questions. But I also want to highlight the fact that this isn't done in very many cities. Uh, many times, the city manager just selects the next chief of police, but our city manager here is taking extra efforts in this and understanding how important this decision is for our community and he's involving not just the, the community, but pretty much so many other, um, avenues that, uh, can give inputs and help us in making this decision. So I, I just want to say thank you for doing that. And I hope, I hope as this go online, that many of you that are here tonight, even the young people, the folks that are watching, um, give your inputs and, and definitely comment on their, what you want to see in our next chief of police. And I, I can't thank you enough for our current chief now, for everything that you've done for our city and for our department and making it the excellent department that we are today. And then I'd like to get the council's, uh, support on an issue that has come to me many times. I've received many emails from folks in my district about some Airbnbs and many of the, the folks in the neighborhood are saying that it's just not, it's just not a constant, it's a constant battle. We don't get to see regular face or regular car every weekend. It's, it's something new or there's a party or they're not maintaining the property. And I've received many of, uh, those types of emails. I've been working with Mr. Shane Diller on this and I'd like to see if we can bring this back and have staff give a presentation just about where it's, like here now in our city, but also some of, what some of the other cities are doing, maybe put in a couple of regulations. It's not out of control now, but I'd like to get ahead of that and see if we can put things in place.
Yeah, I would, I would support having that come back. You know, what I've seen with, when you have something like an Airbnb in a residential neighborhood that is not really set up for vacationing, is those people are coming, they're on vacation. They're there to have a good time and party and drink till potentially wee hours in the morning. So, I think it's a great thing to bring back and review what options we may have.
And we're not, we're not one of those cities that is a destination city right now, but as you look ahead and, you know, the casino and the, the aquatic center and as we continue to grow, we will become that city. And I just want to make sure that, again, that we're ahead of this.
Okay, you got it.
Great, thank you. And then, lastly, I'd like to thank our young people for coming out today. You were excellent in your presentation. You showed leadership that is a role model for many of our young people today. I think Ms. Conley talked about the youth commission. We actually happen to have very many open slots, I believe five for that matter. So I hope you go online, take a look at the application and you submit, because what I saw tonight is exactly what we need on that youth commission. You know, I also want to thank the DART community for coming out as well, too. And I, and I agree with our council member here is that I believe that there's something in the middle and that if we can both work together with the city and definitely have this committee where the young people and also, um, maybe Mr. Matt, uh, Matt Sutton from the restaurant and Ms. Becky Warren from DART and maybe some of our city staff as well to facilitate, facilitate this conversation, to not only find an area in which we can both agree on, but also educate each other. Because I believe that there are things that our young people brought that can definitely be learned by some of the other folks that came earlier today, like from the DART, um, container community, but, but also there are things that our young people can learn as well, too. So I will speak as a Vietnamese individual on that. One of the dishes that we eat is soup, sofa, right? And very many soupy dishes. And one of the containers that they do, um, when you order it to go, is it is in one of those styrofoam because it is piping hot, the broth is piping hot. Now, should we ban that, uh, the styrofoam? I'd like to give them the opportunity to find, um, other alternatives to be able to put that soup in. And so I, I think that's something that can be, be discussed upon. It's not just the, the soup dishes, but also there are other cultural dishes that the styrofoam is what they use because it's most safe and it's, it's what will work for that dish. And so I think those are areas in which both sides can learn and where we can find a medium and work together on. And I think that's it. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Soon?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I also want to give a shout out to all of you that came out tonight. Again, great job. Um, and what you heard from, from different folks, there, there's, there's many sides to, to an issue. So, I look forward to learning more from you and learning more from the, the folks that came out tonight to speak from, um, Restaurant Association and DART and, and so forth. Again, I, I, well, first of all, I'm going to just say I was, I went since we last met, we had our library budget authority, um, but we also, I also had, um, a Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting and the Sacramento Area Council of Governments meeting. Both of those are, are, uh, transportation-related, uh, regional boards, um, that I, that I sit on and all of us sit on regional boards. But the, particularly with the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, um, and I'm going back to the, the folks, the kids that came out tonight, um, it's, it's one thing to, to learn about local government- to the folks, the kids that came out tonight, it's one thing to learn about local government, what you're doing here tonight. But there's a regional level of governance that occurs and many young folks are not aware of. And the previous chair, Jay Shinier, who sits on the Sacramento City Council, started this youth program last year. And that was specifically aimed at getting high schoolers to participate in a similarly a Youth Commission type of leadership program at the regional level for the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. Now, I tried to get the word out, but we had, I believe we had one applicant from the Elk Grove School District, but none of any of the high schools represented here tonight. So, I would really like to see a representative from, you know, one of these high schools that are here tonight. So, I hope you'll, maybe, the easiest way, maybe if you can email me, and I'd love to let you know when that, the next round comes out, because we'll be graduating the first class very soon. And we'll be on the hunt for the next set of applications. And these are high school kids that come from all over Sacramento, the Sacramento region. That's six counties, twenty-two cities, all right? And you'll learn what this regional level is, because this is, I think it was said earlier tonight, and we've said this at Secog, we're doing, all the things that we do here today is for you. The stuff that we're talking about will be built longer after, you know, hopefully I retire sooner than later, but it'll be definitely built, I believe, after I'm out of the workforce and you guys are in your prime in your workforce. That's how long these infrastructure projects take. On that note, I want to, I want to give folks to raise awareness, and also shed some light on the complexity of this issue, which is, we get a lot of our funding for the roads and transit through the state and federal government. And a lot of those, these things, you think about roads, but a lot of it's tied to air quality. Air quality, land use, how we develop our land. You know, one of the things we talked about at the Sacramento Council of Governments last meeting was how to incentivize the construction of more dense housing. You know, we were talking about styrofoam earlier tonight, but, you know, how do we reduce our carbon footprint, not just from use of styrofoam, but, you know, literally the physical footprint? So, are, do we, you know, are we living on large lots? Is that appropriate? You know, maybe not in certain cases. So, we need to look at that. Why isn't it, why is it hard to get builders to build more densely, so we minimize that footprint? So, that was a conversation that we have, or had. But I'm getting back to the air quality analysis, the, and I want to introduce you to it, it may not make sense right now, but I just want to, I just want to introduce you to it. The massive plan that we have from all six counties, twenty-two cities of, you heard about our general plan tonight of what we want to do in the future in the next twenty years? Imagine every single city and county doing something similar to that. And then imagine this organization taking the models from that, factoring in where people might ride their bikes or drive their car, and where they work, and they spit out a model that talks about greenhouse gas emissions. And based on that, the state can determine whether or not you can get transportation funding, put simply. The federal government has a very separate model. And recently, you may have seen in the news, the EPA changed the criteria. And that has a huge effect on our state that we're working through right now at the regional level.
Councilman Sun, your three minutes is up.
I never get these kids here, so I'm taking every moment. I just, I, I'm almost done. I'm sorry, I apologize.
You missed the zero, it was thirty minutes.
I'm choosing to talk about this rather than all the events I went to this weekend. Thank you. I really appreciate the difference. I won't, I won't take too much long. But I just want to say, what the importance of this, the significance of this meeting is that the way the federal government looks at their quality analysis is different from the way the state has done it, which means we could be at risk of not getting, or not being able to receive, because a lot of these, these funding sources are formulaic, meaning based on population, not being able to receive federal funding for those transportation projects. And we're at the same risk of not being able to compete for state funding for transportation projects, if we're not able to show through this plan that we can reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. So, it's not, it's obviously not a simple thing, but I wanted you to introduce you to it, because that's, no longer is just being at a city level or county level enough. Now, you've got to look at things on a regional and a state, and state level in order to solve the issues you're trying to address. You heard the different bills that were presented tonight to talk about styrofoam. So, my only, and I'll part with that, is doing it at a local level is one thing, but just know that regional and state level governance is a whole other thing, and I encourage you to get involved in all of it. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in 1492, a guy named Christopher Columbus got lost. Just kidding, I'll keep my comments brief. On Monday, had an RT meeting, nothing Elk Grove specific. We did take a first peek at the next year's budget, and I will say that RT is in a much healthier financial position, and we are actually building surpluses again, so that's a good thing. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a street named after a fallen veteran, so I want to thank the Wayne Heinz family for putting his name into consideration, as well as Taylor Morrison for naming a major street into their subdivision after Wayne Heinz. Wayne Heinz died in 1968 in Vietnam. And I'm hoping that when it comes time to name the park at the end of the street, that we can give serious consideration to naming it the Wayne Heinz Park. Monday night, Councilmember Wayne and I, myself, had a paratransit board meeting, nothing to report relative to Elk Grove. And this morning, the mayor and I were out at the Regional Sanitation Board meeting that we held out at the treatment plant. Unfortunately, he had to leave to get to the big truck day, because we then went on a tour of all the work that's being done out there. And it is, I asked for the presentation to be made here to show everything that's going on, but you can't get a real magnitude of just the scope of work, the acres and acres and acres of the expansion of that plant until you're out there. So, we were able to drive around and take a tour of it and see these huge concrete basins that have been installed. That project alone was a hundred and eighty million dollar project. When it's completed, this will be the largest and most advanced treatment facility in the western United States. So, pretty big stuff. And I too want to thank all you young folks for coming out and being so passionate about a cause that you believe in. And what I really appreciated is that you took the time to research the implications of the outcome that you would like to see. And so, you spoke with some business owners, you researched some alternatives. And that's what I'm hoping that we can get out of this conversation, is really a deeper dive into everyone having the same information in front of them. So, thank you very much for being here tonight. That's it.
What I did want to add, Vice Mayor, is I did have an opportunity to take a tour, and you're right, it is massive. And it's right in our backyard. It, I often tell folks who have not served in city council that every aspect of it, we have to handle, you know, including the dirty water that goes down the drain. And this is a board that handles that, so.
Two billion dollars, right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Let me see. I attended a number of events, but I wanted to highlight particularly one in which I attended with Post, American Legion Post, to 233 at the Alx Lodge, where old, worn-out American flags were retired. And it was very solemn event, and I've never participated in it, but, you know, I felt that, for those of you who have flags that are worn out, turn it over, and they will properly be retired. And better folks to do it would obviously be, you know, veterans. And that was a wonderful event. The other event that I want to highlight is a early morning swim practice with the Elk Grove Piranha. And if you guys have seen Marcus Allen, he was out there, and he challenged one of the youngsters to a race. He lost, so he jumped into the pool in his suit, and that was enjoyable. If you haven't yet, you got to, you got to take a look at that. But I'm real excited, the swimmers were out there at the Cracodon, we're really excited. So, don't forget, this Saturday is the big opening at 11:00. I want to acknowledge the students for coming out. I know that you guys have worked very hard on this. And, you know, part of the process is that because this is not agendized, we can't act on it tonight. But you've heard the direction that the council has given to staff, is to bring it back to council. And that's, at that point, we can then have a deeper discussion. And those are rules that apply. But I think more importantly, I really am thoroughly impressed with the number of speakers from the various high schools and how articulate you are. It makes me proud that someday I will be leaving the mayor's office in the hands of young people like you. So, as Councilmember Wayne had mentioned earlier, there are a number of youth commissioners that have left for college. Please, I encourage you to apply and be a part of the process. In democracy, it is long and drawn out, but hopefully at the end of the process, we can have a product that we are all proud of. And also, to the DART community members who came out, sometimes our decisions are very difficult in that we have to balance between, you know, the impact on local businesses and then impact on health. These are real issues. But I think that this is an opportunity for us to explore the middle ground and to try to figure out how we can move forward. I'm not saying that what I've heard tonight is not legitimate. I am aware. I'm an avid outdoorsman. I've been hiking out in the woods where it's frustrating to see the trash, the amount of trash, the disrespect that campers would have towards the environment. And my hiking trips and camping trips really are trash abatement. And both my boys and I, we feel sad whenever we see that, but we feel that it's our obligation. And certainly, for somebody in a position where I am elected by the people, I'm very aware of your concerns, because we are caretakers, so that one day you will inherit this earth. So, thank you very much, folks. I appreciate it. And that is the end of my report.
Yes, sir.
Under comment, is there any of the advisors or teachers here? Can you stand up? Thank you. Thank you, because without your leadership, these young men and women don't have the opportunities. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next item.
Take us to Section Eight, Consent Calendar Items.
Okay, Section Eight. Want to pull eight point three and eight point seven. And there are no members of public sign up to speak, so entertain a motion.
I will move the remainder of the consent, but I want to note that on item eight point nine, I'm willing to receive and file the findings on the transfer station feasibility study, but I still do not remain a fan of the city taking that over. I see it as organizational blow. So, I think that's what they advise, too. They, yeah, they don't make a recommendation, I'm just putting it on the record, that even though the study says it might be beneficial, I'm still not in favor.
Right, got a motion? Yes, sir. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, eight point three. I think Councilmember Detrick, you were absent, you asked that you recused from that.
I'll abstain on that, because, you know, I was in Washington DC when you did that.
Okay. All right, and eight point seven. I know that there's progress already. I had a conversation with you, Mr. City Manager. I did want it to put it on record that I would like and direct, if I can get the support of council, direct staff to work closely with the BIA. So, as far as I'm concerned, I think that we're heading in the right direction. Right?
I second that, specifically with respect to bullet point eight, as it has to do with in-track infrastructure. If you could come back, do we want to shoot for maybe the, sometime at the end of summer with more information?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
That's fine.
Mayor Lee, in council, I just wanted to note that we did have a member of the public sign up and toss in a speaker card. Kathy Engel. I'm not sure for which item.
Well, I'm sorry. Ms. Engel, why don't you come up?
I'm actually here on behalf of Lynn Wade, who is sick. So, she asked me to read this for her.
We received the email, too.
Pardon me?
We received the email.
You did? Okay. I'm not going to read the whole, the whole thing that she said, so I'll just, she just said I could read her comments. She said, "My take, we know that China has disrupted the recyclable market by drastically cutting back its importing from the US, and the easy money to be made shipping offshore is gone now. In fact, the recycle center," oh, no, she's not going to say that. "We know that the current trash contract will see drastic cost increases in the next five to seven years. The consultant is suggesting that city takeover of certain portions of the trash processing function can help buffer or reduce the cost impact to ratepayers. Specifically, the city can provide land for a transfer station and parking of trash vehicles. The cost to take over that function in $2,019 is estimated to be almost $1 million a year for the debt service, plus $1.7 to $2.2 million a year in operations and maintenance." So, $2.7 to $3.2 million a year, not counting the cost of land purchase. The same logic was used for the construction of the household hazardous waste collection center by taking over some of the function from the private sector. The city could save ratepayers' money in the future. The problem is, that facility is not generating enough money to even cover the debt service." And this is Lynn. "I don't know about you, but whatever the city tells us, they want to spend money, to save money, grab your purse or wallet and run."
Okay, thank you, ma'am. There are no additional speakers, so want to close public comment. And I'll entertain a motion for eight point three and eight point seven. Got a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstention? And again, let the record show that Councilman Detrick has recused himself on eight point three. All right, next item.
Take us to Section Nine, the public hearings, starting with item nine point one, which is a public hearing to consider amendments to the conditions of approval for the Ermanderal Estates Project located at 8577 Beta Road.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Matt Diaz, Senior Planner, City of Elk Grove. The project before you tonight is the Ermanderal Estates Amendments to the Conditions of Approval. This project is located at 8577 Beta Road and includes five parcels. That forty-plus is a big plus, because the actual size is seventy-two acres. I apologize for that typo, but it is within the rural area community plan as shown on the exhibit before you. The project consists of amendments to three conditions of approval. The Ermanderal Estates Project originally approved as EG02340. This project would bring the design and conditions into compliance with the Elk Grove Rural Road policies and standards, as well as the Rural Area Community Plan recently adopted. Little bit of the background on this project, it was originally approved in November of 2004. This would include a rezone from AR5 to AR2, attentive subdivision map for thirty-five single-family lots, and an environmental document. State law granted two map extensions to the project, and two were filed by the applicant. The map will expire in November with no alternative for an extension. In June of 2008, the Public Works Director approved a substantial compliance request to modify the lot lines, and only the lot lines, in order to accommodate some of the natural features on site. And in 2018, we have been working with the applicant to submit, review, and approve an improvement plan and their final map to effectuate this approval. As shown on the staff report and the slide before you, the first condition to remove is condition number nine. This previously allowed the applicant some flexibility in achieving a gated community. However, with the new general plan amendment, we do not allow gated communities within the rural area. The second condition would reduce the ultimate pavement width of the internal streets from twenty-six to around twenty-two, compliant with our new rural road standards. As this project was approved in 2004, it was not subject to the 2007 approval of the rural road standards, nor the 2019 general plan update. The third condition under consideration for amendment is pertaining to beta road improvements. The rural road standards, I believe, for beta road are about twenty-four to twenty-eight. This would allow them some flexibility in design and deferred improvement should it need. The table in front of you is the current rural road standards for our local street, as well as a collector, which would be beta. And a summary of the amendments, the resolution of these items is critical, as the map will expire in November of this year. Staff requires council confirmation to apply the current city development standards and policies. This is in order to help the applicant achieve some financial, or improve its financial standards with some of the improvements required for this project. The conditions and mitigation measures that are no longer applicable or might need minor amendments to our current standards would still be applicable for our construction plan review. The amendment has been reviewed by our city staff, including the Engineering Division and CCSD Fire. Should the council deny the action, the original conditions would remain for those design standards. Real brief, this project, no further environmental review is required for Section 15162, as this project- this project still maintains its MMRP. And staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution finding no further environmental review is required for this project and approve the amendments to the condition as proposed for you tonight. Staff is here to answer any questions, as well as the applicant.
Any questions? There are no questions. Thank you. At this point, want to invite the applicant to speak. And as a reminder, there is no time limit, so you can go over three minutes. Just don't go over 30 minutes like councilmen.
I'll try to hold myself to three minutes. This project has been around for a while. I have spoken with some members of the city council about this one. We, the main concern was getting the project cost down. You've had some discussions about the one-acre parcels further south, the Benedetto parcels. When you have 20,000 in hog fees and 20,000 in drainage fees, and then you have a lot of frontage improvements, it makes it very expensive. So this allows us to be able, to make the project feasible, to make it buildable, and we plan to go to construction very soon. City staff has worked very hard to help us get there as far as addressing this, but really the whole project is going to the rural road standards, updating the plan to the rural road standards and to your current frontage standards on Beta Road. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? There are no questions. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, at this point, want to open public comment. I see that there are two speakers sign up to speak. Erica Graff. And the following, Erica, is Randy Hauser.
My name is Erica Burnettzer. I am a land use attorney at Mitchell Chadwick. I'm here representing Kevin Beers. He is one of the landowners on Charrington Lane. And Charrington Lane, right now, the map requires emergency access to this subdivision through Charrington Lane. And as we're here speaking about the feasibility and the buildability of the project, there is a very big issue, which is that neither the developer nor the city actually has any legal right to use or to access Charrington Lane. Condition of approval number 35 requires the developer to dedicate and basically widen out Charrington Lane in order to be able to do the emergency access through there. However, without any ability to actually access this road, there is obviously a big design problem. We are not asking the council today to deny the amendments. We're asking instead that the council direct staff and the applicant to go back and reassess the project design here, because right now, there's no way that condition of approval 35 could be fulfilled, and therefore, there's no way that a final map could be approved or any building permit actually issued on this project. The other problem is that Charrington Lane is not currently accessible by emergency vehicles. This was evidenced when a fire truck recently got stuck in a ditch out there and had to be towed out. And for that reason, the fire department also has some big issues with this emergency access plan. You might be wondering why we're bringing this up now, and one of those reasons is that these amendments do bring into question the street system design for the project. And so when we're looking at the street system design, it's also appropriate to look at this emergency access issue. It's also unclear that if the developer were somehow able to make these improvements, for instance, there are apparently, according to planning, some outstanding offers of dedication on some of the parcels, not all, none of which have been accepted. If the city were to go through the whole entire process of accepting those offers of dedication, they also were to use its eminent power, eminent domain power to condemn the other necessary rights away, where the developer could try to work independently with all of the landowners on Charrington Lane to work and forge some kind of easement to allow them to actually complete these improvements. If that were to happen, it is unclear still who would pay for the maintained Charrington Road. It's currently a private road. The only people who have the right to access it are the residents, and they pay to privately maintain it. So that's another issue that we believe should be addressed in these conditions of Lastly, the sequel analysis on this project was completed 15 years ago. The environmental review that it was based upon in the document itself is stale. So we would just ask that the council direct planning to reassess this and bring this back at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Randy Hauser.
Good evening. I'm Randy Hauser. I live right next door to this project you guys are talking about. What is rural road standards? They say they're going to bring them up to rural road standards. Does that mean four lanes? Does that mean still two lanes? Two lanes still?
Rural road standards are a set of policies basically saying that the way that roads should be built out within the rural part of the city, which is a defined area of the city, are different than necessarily the formulas that we would use to do improvements in other areas within the city. Is that a fairly accurate assessment?
Absolutely. So for instance, in Rest Bar Town, you'd have curb gutter and sidewalk in the rural road area. You don't have that.
So it's still going to be two lanes? And we're adding 35 houses out there? And if you guys have ever come from Pleasant Grove when they're dropping off, anybody going north can't get down Bradshaw because we haven't widened that out to four lanes yet. So they all go over, 50% goes down Beta Road coming down through there. It's an absolute disaster down there, in the mornings and in the evenings. Also, have we done studies of where the water runoff is going to go? Because it goes right across my property, right into that property. Where's it going to go now? Kind of need to know that. Also, there's going to be 35 wells out there because they're not connecting to city water? 35 wells with two acres of lawn? How long do you think it's going to be before my well runs dry? This is all stuff that worries me. I'm not necessarily against it, but I need to know this stuff. How can I get that information?
It's on the record. We'll address it.
It's on the record?
Give us a chance. There's an opportunity for the applicant to respond, and then we'll direct staff to address it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There are no additional speakers, so let's go ahead and close public comment. And I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and speak. Mr. Applicant?
Come on up.
You have their concerns, please.
So Charrington Road, as far as access rights, we were required, we were requested by the city of Elk Grove to make that connection to the city, to Charrington. As much for the safety of the Charrington residents as it was for Ermanderol Estates, the more, the fear that you have is that there's a fire at the front of Charrington Road and the people can't get out, or there's a lot of long roads like that in that part of the county. And so if they can go north and get an evacuation out to Ermanderol Estates, that could be very important for them. As far as the drainage, we are not really altering the drainage pattern out there. So the backs of the lots on the north where the gentleman's house is, we are not really changing the drainage pattern. It should all go south from that area and go toward the creek, because the creek runs through the middle of the property, and so everything drains to the creek. As far as the access onto Charrington, there was a subdivision that came in, now this would be in my time of the county, that split the parcel back there into four parcels. At that time, there was access because three of those parcels accessed through there on a county-approved map in 89, somewhere in that vicinity. But we do not intend to access Charrington Road in any way. Since we are not using the road at all, we just will leave Charrington Road to the Charrington Road people, and they, I agree that Charrington Road needs work, and it is an interesting road as far as a patchwork of IODs and privately-owned property. But we would add no traffic to Charrington Road, and the only traffic that we would get from Charrington Road is in an emergency. If you have any more questions, I will be happy to answer.
Any questions? No? Good. All right, I want to declare public hearing closed, and council deliberation and direction.
So I just have a quick question of staff. We have a solution to the Charrington Road issue that was brought up by the attorney.
So let me clarify a few issues. First and foremost, this is not a new tenant map. This is an approval that was approved in 2004, so the lay of the land is, they still have the rights to those entitlements. There is a substantial conformance where the lot lines changed a few, the alignment of the roads changed a little. The access point to fire access is the same. The condition 35 speaks to the frontage improvements along Charrington Lane, adjacent to this property and this property only. And we can get to that in a minute. Regarding fire access, you know, fire, emergency personnel do not discriminate between private and public roads, so it's not a concern of access for emergency vehicles like police and fire. And there's, from my measurements, just from the parcel view, there's varying width, 20, 25 feet, which is adequate. Fire has also had a chance to review this, not only in 2004, but with this condition amendment. With that said, I want to suggest maybe the fact that the right-of-way out there in the rural area is quite convoluted, as Bob could probably attest, maybe if it's not the will of Public Works to have this as a public road yet, but have reserved, right, maybe we could get IODs or change condition 35, and if you don't mind, I have a suggestion, change to that condition. It reads, "At the discretion of the Public Works Director, the applicant shall dedicate design and construct Charrington Lane in accordance with the Elk Grove Rural Road Improvement Standards." And then we take the last sentence of 37, which allows deferral or in lieu payment if the Public Works Director has the discretion to turn it eventually into a public road. So that reads, "The applicant shall dedicate design," oh wait, sorry, "the city may agree to defer to some or all of these improvements and collect a contribution in lieu of design and construction of the improvements in accordance with the City Municipal Code, Chapter 12.03."
I'd move the item with that amended language.
So before I second, I just want to make, so you have to reach out to fire on that as an emergency road? Are you good?
I don't think so. I think that all has been handled through the development process. They've already been reached out to, and fire has participated in the condition of development.
But to defer it, then you, that would be your discretion, but I don't know.
Maybe to answer that is, there's adequate width out there for fire. We certainly could coordinate with them in the improvement plan process, but there's adequate width out there for fire vehicles.
Okay.
Based on their standard, and they've reviewed the entitlement, and they'll have a crack at the improvement plans as well.
Okay, then with that, if you're comfortable with that pavement width, then I will second that. But I do want to speak to Mr. Hauser's comments, because it just didn't sound like he might have been familiar with the rural area as it was established, and so maybe we could just give a little background on that and how it pertains to traffic through there.
So back in, help me, Patty, or 2009? Seven?
Four, five? It was while I was still in the planning commission, so.
Okay. We were, I think we were wrapping up when I got on board, 2007, in that ballpark. The rural road standards and policies.
Oh, rural road standards. I thought you were talking about the establishment, the whole rural area.
Yeah. But the rural road standards are established to preserve rural roads to as long as possible based on capacity, and there's trigger points for that, as well as sections that are atypical of your typical subdivision, in other words, curb gutter sidewalk. So it's also reduced lane width. So in the case of the internal streets, you would only have, for this, 22 feet of pavement width and then ditches. You'd have a shoulder and then a ditch. So it keeps the rural feel and preserves the rural character.
Is it fair to say, I mean, the consequence of the traffic on those rural roads, that's kind of something that that community out there was willing to live with, right? So I just wanted you to hear that, Mr. Hauser, so you understood the history of how all this came to be.
2009, Leszky Grove wasn't there. So traffic at that time wasn't likely to be today. We haven't moved this yet.
I understand. So I just want to restate my motion for the record that I'm moving staff's recommendation with the change to condition 35 as amended by the Development Services Director. Second.
Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, extension? All right, next item.
Take us on to item nine point two, which is a public hearing to consider resolution amending certain Nexus Study maps for the Southeast Policy Area Park and Trail Fee Program and the Southeast Policy Area and Southeast Policy Area in Laguna Ridge Specific Plan Phase III Drainage Fee Program and levying an amended fee.
My name is Brandon Merritt. I'll keep this very short. Tonight's item is merely an update to the SEPA Drainage Fee Program and the SEPA Park and Trail Fee Program, and specifically amending the Nexus Study maps that were adopted by your council in February, a few months ago. And also, one other major change is the removal of the Beach Stone Lakes Fee from the SEPA Drainage Fee Program. So both of these are administrative items to, but necessary items that need to be done. So just real quick, the amendment of the maps is revision to the SEPA boundaries when the SEPA Drainage Fee and SEPA Park and.
Hang on just a second, Brandon. Can we get that back door closed, please? Sir, can you either come in or go out? Thank you.
When the SEPA Drainage and SEPA Park and Trail Fee were adopted in February of this year, a portion of Lost Parkway was not reflected correctly in the maps that were adopted in the Nexus Studies. There was actually a realignment that had already been adopted in 2018, and that just was not included in the Nexus Study map, so that is a cleanup tonight. That is, staff's requesting your adoption. And on the slide, you can see that is the realignment here. So that is what the new maps will reflect. And then the second major item in this public hearing is the removal of the Beach Stone Lakes Fee. This table shows that it is uniformly 316 or 317 dollars, which is the removal of the Beach Stone Lakes Fee that these SEPA Drainage Fees are reduced by. So the county indicated that after the adoption of the SEPA Drainage Fee Program back in February, that they would indeed like to continue collecting the Beach Stone Lakes Fee. So this item is to clear that up and confirm that action. So that is the end of my slide, my slideshow, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? There are no questions. Thank you. All right, I want to declare public hearing open. I want to open for a public comment opportunity, seeing that no members of public sign up to speak, I want to close public comment. Declare public hearing close. Council deliberation and direction.
Move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, there's a request to move 10.3 up. Is there any objections? No? No objections? You got it. Step on up.
So with that, we'd move to item 10.3, which is considered adoption of a proclamation declaring June 2019 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Elk Grove and provide staff direction regarding Pride events in June 2019.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for entertaining the change in the order. We do have a few people here tonight for this item, and thank you for giving them the opportunity to see it a little sooner. Kristin Lawrence, I'm the Multicultural Committee's staff liaison, and I'm bringing this to you tonight at the recommendation of the Multicultural Committee. We're looking for two points of action from you this evening to consider the proclamation recognizing June as Pride Month in Elk Grove. This would be the first time that has happened. And then also, we're looking for additional direction from you on the potential participation from the city in Sacramento Pride March on June 9th. I think there's a couple of members next to me here, Jessica Carter and Scott Matsumoto. They're both with the Multicultural Committee. If you have any questions for them. We also have a resident who had drafted the contents of the proclamation that is before you this evening. Andres Ramos is here, and he has some representatives with him from PFLAG, so we hope that you will consider this proclamation and provide. So, we hope that you will consider this proclamation and provide us some additional direction.
Good evening, Mayor Steve Lee and esteemed members of the council. I just wanted to take a moment to say that this proclamation and officially participating in the Pride Parade in June is a really important step for our community, especially because the task that we've been assigned as a multicultural committee is to help make Elk Grove a more diverse and welcoming place to people from all backgrounds. And taking a stance like this will help to bring people to our community and give them that comfort and help them feel welcomed. So, I'm really excited to support it, and I hope that you guys approve it tonight. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Lee and council members. Scott Matsumoto with the Multicultural Committee. Just wanted to say that, just basically give kudos to everybody who helped create this proclamation, and if the goal is to create a more inclusive community, this proclamation is a step in that direction, and so I ask for your support on this. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? No questions? Thank you. Right, want to open for a public comment. See, first speaker that signed up to speak is Kathy Ingle. Following Kathy is Andres Ramos.
Hi, I was surprised that Elk Grove didn't already have Pride Month, because pretty much everybody else does, so I was a little bit shocked. So, I just wanted to say, totally support it. Totally, I love that the Multicultural Committee got this on here, and I hope that the council supports it, too. Thanks.
Okay, next speaker is Andres Ramos. Following Andres is Rosanna Herbert.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and council members. Just would like to take this opportunity to thank the council and thank the Multicultural Committee for taking up this historic proclamation for our city to recognize the LGBTQ community. I appreciate that the council, certainly the past decade since the Multicultural Committee was created, has really made a proactive commitment to embracing the diversity that makes Elk Grove such a wonderful community. And, you know, through my time when I was on the committee, we talked about a range of issues and how we can make Elk Grove a more inclusive community for all. I think during the first two or three festivals when I was on the committee, we reached out to the local PFLAG chapter to make sure that we had some LGBTQ representation, and they did come to our festival. And I heard feedback about how people were glad to see that Elk Grove was embracing that aspect of diversity in our community. And so, to come here tonight and see the city present this proclamation, I think is very beautiful, because it reaffirms our city's commitment to the community. And, you know, diversity is a very interesting thing, because, you know, as a person of color, people can see that you're different, but sometimes, being a member of the LGBTQ community, there can be some invisibility about that. And so, it's important, I think, to make these statements so that folks in the community know that there's, you know, we exist, and that the council is making a public statement to demonstrate that we belong here. So, I want to thank you all. I want to thank the committee and city staff for bringing this forward, and thank the members of PFLAG for being here tonight, and also members of the faith community who've welcomed the LGBTQ community in Elk Grove with open arms. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rosanna Herbert. It's my director, Herbert. Welcome to our chamber.
Thank you, Mayor Lee and members of the city council. It's great to be here tonight. I'm really excited that the city of Elk Grove is going to hopefully endorse this proclamation and participate in Gay Pride Day. As many of you probably know, I am the first openly LGBTQ person on the smud board, and I want to attest to the fact that it's really important for people who are different to be seen. And a lot of times, people who are gay or lesbian, bisexual, transgender can not be seen, can be dismissed, can be not included. And it's important for government to step forward and say, we see you, we appreciate you, we are a city that embraces everyone, and you're part of this community, too. And so, I would like to say that I think it's great that you're considering this, and I strongly urge you to show excitement and respect for those people in your community who are LGBTQ. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Emily Althenight. Following Emily is Ryan Althenight.
Mayor and council, I'm Emily Althenight. It's a difficult last name, and now you'll know how to say it for my spouse back there. I am very recently fully out as a pansexual person. It's a term a lot of people don't know. Basically, what it means is that my spouse could be of any gender, and there are many, and it wouldn't matter to me, because he's my person regardless. I am a member of the LGBTQ community that can be particularly, not just invisible, as Andres talked about, but invisibility brings erasure. And we, it's very damaging to our identities to feel like we must be erased in order to be able to survive in society at all. And although Elk Grove is no place for hate, witnessing all of the debate about the curriculum update was incredibly painful for me and others in my community, and this proclamation will do a lot to heal that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Althenight. Following Ryan is Emily Bender.
Thank you, guys, for taking a look at the proclamation. I'm really thankful to live here in the city of Elk Grove. It's a very diverse city. It's a very vibrant city. It's a place I'm proud to raise my two children, along with my amazing wife Emily, who could definitely speak better than I can. But I also was surprised when I realized this proclamation is even something that needed to be brought up. I didn't realize Elk Grove didn't have something like this on the books. So, I think it's just a good first step forward, even if it's somewhat symbolic. But my hope is it to be more than symbolic and follow action with time and involve various voices and ideas on how to openly affirm this particular community, which already lives here and is part of, you know, who we are here, and find ways to openly embrace it and engage in activities, pride events, other things. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Emily Bender. Following Emily Bender is Maureen Craft.
Good evening. Thank you so much for even considering this as a historical proclamation for the city. I'm here to represent PFLAG Sacramento. PFLAG is a support group for parents, friends, family members of LGBT individuals, including LGBT individuals themselves. Yes, we are PFLAG Sacramento, but we actually have, are such a large chapter that we also have included an additional meeting in Elk Grove. And so, we do meet here once a month in Elk Grove, and many of your residents actually come to our meetings for support. And so, we just wanted to say thank you so much for that. We have a lot of our board members here today, and we're, I just wanted to kind of give you a brief history of PFLAG, in case you didn't know. There are over 400 chapters worldwide. Sacramento Chapter is one of the oldest chapters. We've been around for 36 years. PFLAG as a whole has been around for 46 years. And it all began with a lady named Jean Mansford in 1972, when she walked down what is now considered Pride Parade in 1972, and she walked down the street carrying a sign that said, "I love my gay son." And she had so many people come up to her and say, "Thank you. I wish you were my mother. I wish my parents could be that proud of me." She had so many young people come up to her to give her a hug, that she decided to get other parents involved and start up a PFLAG. And now, we are over 400 chapters strong, and we continue to grow, and a lot of these issues are still very strong, and many of the fears are still there from a lot of our families. And so, we're here to provide that support, and please, if you encounter any of your constituents who need the support, please refer them to us. Our website is pflag sacramento dot org. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen Craft. Following Maureen Craft is Marcy Basila.
Hi, Mayor Lee and the council. How are you this evening? I am, we have been talking about diversity and inclusion for the past year or so here, going back and forth, you know, with different topics. But I am so happy to be here tonight to support the LGBTQ community. I think as we have, continue to have these talks about our community ever growing and ever changing, I think that this is a great step that we would make tonight to support this proclamation. I'm not also, I'm also here to speak not just for the LGBTQ adults, but the youth. We have to do a good job at supporting our youth, and I think this would be a great step in the right direction. So, I'm going to thank you in advance, so, for supporting this, because I think this would be a great step for us.
Thank you. Marcy Basila. Following Marcy is Constance Conley.
Good evening, council members. I'm Marcy Basila. I am a staff member at the Sacramento LGBT Community Center. Thank you for having us tonight. If you haven't came by to our center, our mission is to have, works with, to create a region where LGBTQ people thrive. We support the health and wellness of most marginalized, advocate for equality and justice, and work with the, and work to build a culturally rich LGBTQ community. I'm not only that, but I'm also an Elk Grovean. I've lived here for the past 15 years. I do have an LGBTQ youth, so I am very much of a parent and coming from a parent's standpoint. Thank you for having us. And as you know, you said it time and time again, the children are our future. And right now, if you haven't heard, our center has also expanded our programs in regards to youth. We're building a, opening up an emergency shelter for youth come later part of June, and Pride Month definitely is a busy time for us. But also, I was hoping that the rest of the high schoolers were here to hear me say, Q Prom is this past, next weekend at Sacramento State, which is the largest, you know, Q Prom for our queer youth to come and be themselves. So, I thank you. This coming June 8th and 9th is our Pride Parade, is June 9th, and we have a two-day celebration, and thank you for allowing me to speak, and hopefully that, I appreciate the fact that you have me here for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Constance Conley.
Hi, I'd just like to echo what Maureen and the previous speaker said. We went through a whole exercise of diversity and inclusion, and we're not immune to the problems that some of our high schoolers have, who are gay and lesbian in the schools with bullying. And now, it's time to put our, practice what we preach, and the leaders of this city need to send a loud message that we do embrace everyone, no matter who they are, what they are, or whom they love. And to not pass this proclamation would be to deny their rights as citizens, I believe. And so, please, this should be a five-o no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no additional members of the public sign up to speak, want to close public comment and counsel deliberation and direction. Members? Go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and the work that the multicultural committee did to propose this and bring it forward, and staff for their work on it. I think this is a, this is timely, considering it's the 50th anniversary of Stonewall, so I think I'm glad to see this move forward, but I'll stop there. I'm sure someone will propose a motion. I'll propose a motion. I was given someone's opportunity.
A second.
Well, that's, yeah, I'll put it in my two cents. You know, I think that Elk Grove really is a special place, and it's a place in which we accept all. And that is the premise that I truly believe in. And this is an opportunity to educate the community and to let them know where we stand as leaders in the city. And so, it is certainly timely. I'm glad that it came organically from the community requesting us to consider this, so, you know, it really is a no-brainer. You know, I'm ready. Yeah. Go ahead.
You know, we get a lot of stuff presented to us to support, and what I need to applaud all of you that came here tonight is your role models for people that have a hard time coming out and showing their true colors. So, I appreciate all of you coming out and openly expressing who you are or who you support, because it's not easy to do. Anytime we're different in any way, you know, it doesn't, it could be your size, it could be your height. So, you're too tall, you're too short, you're too skinny, you're too heavy. You know, everybody's got a different persona. And I, you know, I grew up being bullied as a little kid, and then I became, as I got older, defending people that were being bullied. And there's so many different reasons, but for you guys to come out tonight and represent your community and those that support the community, I really applaud you. It really means a lot to see that. And I think Elk Grove is a great community. That's one of the things that my wife and I loved when we came here in the late 80s, early 90s, was the diversity and acceptance in so many ways, with, you know, not only the diversity of cultures, but the diversity of mixed marriages, and the beautiful children that have come from that. So, really, you know, you guys need to give yourself a round of applause for being the people that you are and the passion that you bring. So, give yourself a hand.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to vote in favor of this proclamation. I want to thank the Multicultural Committee for coming up with this idea, and I agree with Maureen that this is an important component of inclusion and diversity, and if we want to set the values for our organization, we need to start from up here. But, you know, I just noticed that these letters keep getting tacked on to the label that defines your group, to the point that now it's just a plus at the end of it. So, I have a suggestion that maybe you guys can take back to the powers that be, and it's a little crass, but I'm going to clean it up for, in case there's young ears watching at home, but that is, to change those letters to DGAD, as in IDGAD, who your heart tells you to love. It usually has a different letter at the end of it, but I won't say that letter there.
All right, shall we call the question?
I just also had to add on, Mayor, the direction about the city's participation in the Pride Parade.
Oh, thanks for catching that.
Yeah, if I could add that on to the motion.
Yeah, definitely so. So, we got a motion, we got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, abstention? All right, unanimous. Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you, brother.
So, we do have the resolution. Are you pre-printed? And we've asked a council member when to present it. If Representative can step up, please? In fact, you know, all of you guys should step up. Yeah, come on up. Come on up.
I did want to say a few words, and that is, I want to appreciate all of you for being here. But I think the only person in this room who probably remembers these two iconic people that I'm going to mention tonight is Director Herbert, and that is Ms. Margie Covino and Gal Vaughn, who is no longer with us today. But, but I can tell you that 20 years ago, when I was active in the community, they were the two godmothers of the LGBT community at the time, and Ms. Gal Vaughn brought the entire community together to understand and to be educated about the LGBT community through music and through food and through fellowship. And through that, we continue to celebrate her through the entertainment of music and food, and we had the opportunity to attend the Sacramento Pride Festival, install all the wonderful entertainment and the loving people that brought us in all together. And so, today, we are a community, and if you look at us now, look at all of you and look at us in this, in this community, that we love each other as one, as one entire family. So, it is so, it warms my heart so much to be able to present this. And Councilmember Soon and I was able to attend the Four Freedoms Award, where we got a chance to see. where we got a chance to see our Assemblymember Evan Low and Mandy Lee be awarded, but also talk about coming out and the struggles with that. And so, as our Councilmember Dietrich mentioned, having you all come out here and just sharing yourself with us here is truly something special for us. So congratulations, and thank you for being a part of our community.
Thank you.
So come on.
How about we get the council to come down as well, too, and get a picture of them?
It's always better to squeeze.
Ready, one, two, three.
Now Haley, get back. I figured.
One more, one more.
Yeah, I think we've got a couple cameras working.
Better smile. All right, let's move to the next item.
I think that'll actually take us back to item 10.1, which is to provide direction regarding options for Christmas tree at Civic Center.
Hey Jason, hold on a second. Did we, did we give an answer on the parade? I didn't hear that part. Good, thank you.
Okay, so thank you for entertaining an item on a Christmas tree in late May. I thought you might need something to help you get in the mood. Okay, kidding aside, Kristin Lawrence, I'm your Public Affairs Manager. And we're, we're taking an item before you tonight, asking you to provide some direction regarding some options for a Christmas tree at the Civic Center. And to tree or not to tree is the question to start with, so. There, there has been no official city Christmas tree since incorporation. And as we're working through and establishing a new facility at the Civic Center site, we're looking for those opportunities to create a placemaking type of experience for the community. We want that to be a gathering place for them, and we want them to feel like it's their place to go for special events and festivals and sporting events and all sorts of activities. And so, we're proposing to introduce a city Christmas tree with your direction, to provide the community amenity. It's consistent with other cities in the region. A lot of others do that. There's a list included in the staff report on who has city trees. And it would complement the, our efforts to introduce a new holiday event the first weekend in December. There has been a tree that has had a bit of an identity crisis in Old Town, if you will. There's a lot of folks that have thought that that's the city's Christmas tree. In fact, that's not the case, but it is some very well-intentioned Old Town property owners who, at their own expense, have decorated that tree and worked with the Old Town Foundation to light it each year as part of the holiday celebration for the Dickens Fair and throughout the month of April. A visual of that tree is represented here. Unfortunately, there's a good number of community members that have criticized that tree despite the property owner's attempt at some goodwill. I think Joey Tomko was here a couple months ago and had some things to say about that tree. And so I'm only bringing that to lighten that there was kind of a tree, but not an official one.
Joey always has something to say.
Okay, so we are proposing to introduce a new holiday event on December 7th. It does happen to be Pearl Harbor Day this year that the first Saturday in December falls on. So we are looking at ways that we can integrate our veterans and our new Veterans Hall that will be out there, and how we can incorporate that. But we don't have a name. I mean, there's still a lot of things that are to be determined, but we are envisioning an evening event. We have been working with the Elk Grove Community Council. They provided an event sponsorship grant application that you guys reviewed a couple of weeks ago. And they would like to bring the Holiday Lights Parade back in a new iteration with a new route that would conclude at the Civic Center site in conjunction with the tree lighting. This event we're also envisioning would include holiday music, of course, and some vendor stalls. And we're really, Jody and Lana and Cambria and, and some others. We've all been trying to put our heads together. We started talking about it. We'd like it to look kind of like a European Christmas market. So that's kind of where we were headed in concept, but there's a lot still to be flushed out. There was a tree built into, a tree location built into the design of the Civic Center. You wouldn't know it necessarily walking past this particular area, but it is adjacent to the Veterans Grove. And that was purposely done because we think that that would be a great open space to allow for a tree lighting ceremony. It has some anchor points in place, and we're working with Public Works to ensure that the necessary electrical is put into place, depending on the options that you choose. Some, some of them require a bit more power than others, but they're looking to include that as part of the existing work already in progress on site. So the first question is, if it, if you go with a tree, like most households, are you going live or artificial? And so, a live tree does have some reoccurring costs. And for a tree of this size, we're looking at 40 to 60-foot tree. It has some reoccurring costs for the actual tree itself, its transportation, and some other equipment to put it into place and to install and decorate it. So, we would be looking to secure contractors. There is a proposal included in this package that tells you kind of what we'd heard from a kind of unique entity, but what we were envisioning as far as costs go. So it is a little bit steep, not gonna lie, but those are some recurring costs if you go with a live tree option. We have three options for you tonight. The first one is kind of the Cadillac option, if you will, but it's also kind of an iconic experience. If you've ever visited Old Sacramento during the holidays, they have the Theater of Lights. And that's produced by Stage 9 Exhibitions. And it is an animated tree that includes its own sound system. It is tied into an additional larger production of the Theater of Lights. I don't know if you've been out there or not, but it is a custom production that they're proposing with programming for both lights and music. A 40 to 60-foot tree providing lights, custom ornaments, sound system, and as well as storage after the season's over. So I have a very brief sample to show you that came from.
I've yearned for the traditions of old with visions of Christmas trees, sugarplums, and candy canes dancing in my head.
So focus on the tree, if you can.
Now, if you would all be so kind, I would like to take you back to a time when Sacramento was a new and bustling town on the edge of the frontier. It was an exciting time in the new state of California. Sacramento City was recovering from the great floods of 1861. The stockings on the tree were hung by the chimney with care. In hopes that Saint Nicholas soon would be there. The children were nestled all snug in their beds while visions of sugarplums danced in their heads. And Mama and her curochine, and I in my cap, had just settled down for a long winter's nap. When out on the lawn there arose such a clatter that the new fallen snow gave the luster of midday to all chicks below. Then, what do my wandering eyes should appear, but a miniature sleigh and eight tiny reindeer.
Look, it's Santa!
Quiet Christmas! Time for you to chill out, Santa. You look great in blue, Santa!
I think we liked it.
Okay, I think that gives you some sense for what's being proposed, what's currently shown in Old Sacramento. They are proposing to create a custom story for this particular tree. And they would work with staff and anyone that you would want to direct us to work with to kind of create a custom story for Elk Grove that has the lights tied in with the music. And when it, it can be scheduled nightly, so it's a opportunity to provide entertainment throughout the holiday season. So it works on, once it's pre-programmed, very little maintenance monitoring. It kind of does its own thing, and we could set the parameters for those shows. But it would give our guests an opportunity at any night during the holiday season to come out and experience something unique. That is option one. Option two is an artificial tree, similar to the trees that you would see in the hotels and shopping centers. It has some alternative options, traditional and creative as such. We kind of liked the ribbon tree that's shown in the bottom right corner. We thought that was kind of interesting and unique. It does, typically, the, the commercial retailers will sell you the tree, but they won't install it. So we would have to look to go to someone for assistance with installation and removal, that sort of thing. And depending on the kind of tree you chose, there could be some additional decoration or ornament packages we would need to purchase. It does present a bit of a storage issue. We're a little short on storage space around the city. So we would need to figure that out. And according to the retailers, you could expect an artificial tree to have about a six to eight-year lifespan before you would need to replace it. Option three would be purchasing a live tree with traditional decorations. The live tree recurring costs would come back into play. So while this is the startup lowest-cost option, it actually has a higher cost in subsequent years because you're buying a new tree every year. So it does require an additional contractor to help us with installing, decorating, and removing the tree. And we would need to figure out storage for decorations and lights. Alternatively, tonight you could tell us, let's not go with the tree, but let's pursue some alternative decoration options. We do have some light poles out there that we can play with. And as you saw from that video, there's some cool stuff that you can do with lights against buildings. It may not have the tree lighting ceremony attached to it, but we could definitely be festive out there. And I think Lana and I could work together to figure out something cool. So, next steps, we're looking to get direction from you on tree or no tree, and if yes, your preferred option. Thank you.
All right, any questions? No? All right, okay, want to open for public comment? I've got one speaker signed up to speak, Mr. Randy Becker. Come on down.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. You go back to the days where the Christmas lighting was at Kerr Junior High School. And then when it was moved directly down where it currently sits at Old Town, that didn't go over very well. I can tell you that a lot of the community was outraged and upset. As we move forward into a city, there are some things the city's gonna want to take over or change. And I'd caution you as you do this, because you're gonna have a group that's not gonna be kind, to say the least. As long as the Dickens Fair is running, I would hope this council and future councils would respect the Dickens Fair and not make changes or create problems of running head-to-head because of wanting to do something for the new city. We have a chance to make our own story, not a story that's already been written. If you go to a lot of the towns around, whether it be Nevada City or Auburn or some of the other towns, Christmas is circulated around the old part of towns. So as you move forward in wanting to create a Christmas atmosphere, I would keep that in mind. I'm not one for artificial. I'm not one for fake. I think we should put a tree in the ground and watch it grow. As the city grows and as our future grows and as our youth grows, that will then become their, their Kerr, their Old Town. It will be their memories, not ours. And I think that's where we need to go, if that's the direction of, of putting a tree in. In the meantime, there's decorations, there's different things that we can add. But I do believe that a tree should be put in the ground and we watch it grow. Now, I'm not talking about an eight-foot tree or something of that nature, but it's something decent enough that we could recognize and, and watch it grow. Because it's not gonna be this generation. It's gonna be our kids' generation, our grandkids' generation that's gonna be enjoyable. As you know, that I've lived in this town for 40-some years as a young man. So even though those trees, in theory, stopped growing at one point in time, there was some little kid that watched their parents put that tree in the ground and watched it grow. So that's what I would do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Want to close public comments, since there are no additional speakers sign up to speak, council deliberation and direction.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
For Kristin, is it, through this proposal, would it be possible to, and I appreciate Randy's words and comments, would it be possible to incorporate Dickens Fair in such a way that, you know, wouldn't conflict with this programming? We could do a weekend aside type of thing, or?
Yeah, we actually have scheduled or proposed the event, so it does not compete with the Dickens Street Fair, which is scheduled the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So this would be the following weekend.
Okay.
So we're not looking to compete with that, and we want to still honor what they're doing in Old Town.
That's, that's fantastic, and I think a bit the best of both worlds. I got more, but I'm gonna defer to Councilmember Dietrich.
So Kristin, is one of the options, have you looked at having what the largest live tree, literally a live tree to be planted, as Randy had mentioned? Have you looked at that option?
We haven't looked at that option.
I, I think that's something we should explore, is find out, to get a permanent site for the tree.
We, we discussed it during briefing. I forget who it was, but somebody was telling me that live trees don't live. There's no guarantee that they will live. I forget who it was. Was it what, you, Bob?
I think the issue is how big a tree do you want, and the bigger you get, the less like, the tougher it is to transplant and have it survive. So you just, it's just an issue of picking the largest tree you can get with the box and deciding that's good enough.
I gotta say, I mean, Christmas is my favorite holiday. And I, I think we've got a great opportunity to showcase this new, you know, center that we have with the buildings and create something in addition to our tradition that we have with the Dickens Fair in Old Town that I think the, a lot of residents. Town that I think a lot of residents would enjoy. I know it's a little bit more pricey up front, but I was thinking about, you know, we've got over a hundred and seventy thousand people, that's less than a dollar a person if you think about that, for that's the first year, but then it'll be a little less the following years. And, you know, I would, I would want to make sure that, you know, it obviously isn't going to get recycled, and whatever we do, I'd also recommend that, you know, there's other religions, other celebrations, whether it's Kwanzaa or other holidays, that I think if there's some way we could put a nod to that during the celebration as well, I think that would, you know, we just talked about being inclusive and everything, I think that would, to put a nod to other religious celebrations would be beneficial for this event. But I want to make a pitch for, you know, first of all, a tree. I've always had a live tree myself, and I just appreciate that, and secondly, I like the first option, so.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to echo a lot of what Randy said. In fact, he kind of stole my thunder, but, you know, the part of the reason that the tree at Kerr was so special, one is because it had grown with the community, two, because it was at the corner of Elk Grove Boulevard and Elk Grove Florin, which was historically the center of town, and three, because it was always there. So even when it wasn't Christmas time and it wasn't strung with lights, you'd drive by and you know that's the tree that's going to get lit up, and it would kind of take you into that spirit or that mindset throughout the year. Now, those guys were crazy. They used to tie rope to the end of arrows and shoot arrows up into the tree to the guy that had climbed the tree and then pull the lights up that way. So I'm not saying OSHA would let us light that tree the way they used to, but anyway, it was a neat sense of community that had a whole different application necessarily than just spectacle. But one of the things that I think Darren was just touching on is something that we need to consider, and that is that, you know, I celebrate Christmas, I love Christmas, but a lot of our community does not. And so are we going against our diversity and inclusion efforts by putting a big stamp of Christmas out at Civic Center where we could do something more with a light show or something more akin to Festival of Lights or something, you know, that's non-denominational in nature and leave the Christmas celebration to the Dickens Fair and to Old Town? But if we do want to go forward with this, I second what's been brought up and what Randy says, that we find a prominent place to plant as big of a tree as we think will successfully live, you know, some sort of conifer and let it grow and, you know, build whatever we need to into that area that would make lighting it in the future, you know, possible. But I can't support spending a hundred and twenty-five grand for a Christmas tree light show every year.
It's not every year, though, just so you-
The option one would be.
Yeah, I thought, Kristen, there's some upfront costs, but after that-
Yeah, the startup cost in year one is projected at a hundred and twenty-five annual costs thereafter are around forty-five thousand anticipated.
Oh, I apologize. Well, my other comments still stand.
I like Mr. Becker's idea in having a live tree and watching it grow so the many families and generations to come can enjoy it. I think, you know, if it was an artificial tree, we'd have to find a place to store it, and so now we won't need to look for that, right? And having to pick a tree every new year if we were to get a live tree. I like the live tree. I like having the tree and watching it grow. I, you know, again, I'm with the Vice Mayor here, and if the cost to get a live tree every year is going to be so much more than getting an artificial tree and being able to bring it out whenever we want, I would be in favor of getting an artificial tree so that we can continue to recycle it every year, as we're on the topic of recycling.
You know, kind of maybe to touch on Randy's point and just kind of thinking out loud with what Pat said about the, you know, we've got Old Town and all the improvements we're doing there, and the history of everything in Old Town on the celebration of Christmas, we could still do something down there, but then have something new out at the civic area. Something to just think about, we could just do maybe two different things.
Yeah, I mean, we could bolster up the Dickens Fair, you know, working with the Old Town Foundation and figuring out how we could add to it and then still add on something.
Kristen, do we do any events? I'm trying to remember, besides the Dickens Fair, is there anything else that we do? I mean, I know obviously we did the ice skating rink one year, but is there anything else that we do out on the plaza other than the Dickens Fair that time of year? Because that's the other thing, I mean, if you're going to spend a lot of money, you kind of want to have something that's going to be a draw down there. If there's no draw, it's kind of other than the novelty of having it.
Well, and then to that point, you have to think about the spillover effect to the businesses in Old Town versus at the Civic Center site, there is no businesses to support there with spillover. But I do like the whole Christmas market idea. I really am intrigued by that vision.
I do too, and I think that's why the, again, the initial prices are more pricey, but if you create that draw, it will attract people, and I think, again, you have a new, this is the first year those things will be open, that area, we have a, I think we have a chance to really kick it off with a bang and, you know, create something that's very unique for Elk Grove and memorable for the new families here.
So I lost a fight at home on real tree versus fake, and so now we're a real tree because it creates that ambiance, right? You know, that Christmas feeling. I would be in favor of a real tree, but I think Councilman Sun, you hit on a really good point. I mean, how do we be inclusive of this? There's Kwanzaa, there's Hanukkah, and, you know, I mean, how do we do an event that shows that we are a city of inclusion? I'm open to the possibility of developing some sort of a nexus between Old Town and the event that is being proposed here. I'd say if we do go with the tree, I would say we'd go with a real one, and I would support what Mr. Becker is suggesting, is planning something as large as possible and kind of watching it grow. That certainly would cut of cost, but I think in terms of the initial, we still, if we're still going in this direction, how do we, we still need a tree, right? So-
I think if you go with a large tree that you're going to actually grow, it's going to be more expensive on the front end than what just a cut tree is, because they have to actually get the whole root ball and everything and-
Is there any cost analysis on that, Kristen?
No, we had not evaluated a live tree option to speak to how to honor some of the other holiday celebrations, though, that are around that time. As I mentioned, with option one, stage nine, they're willing to customize a show for us and a story so that if we wanted to be more inclusive in the story that we tell, that that lighting show represents, then we could incorporate that kind of storyline, you know, and recognize all of the holidays happening around that time.
That's a thought, yeah. I think if it's, I can see that.
Right. Members, are we all over the place?
Yeah.
Maybe, I think we all agree that we want a live tree that we can watch grow and plant, right? I think that-
I'm still advocating for the first option, but I mean, obviously defer to all of you.
It was the first option, you can plant a tree, I'm assuming, right, Kristen?
Yeah, I think you would readjust the costs and we could go back to stage nine and ask for a new proposal, but we would need to work with Public Works and any of their contractors to kind of figure out whether the location we have already prepped for a tree would handle a live tree and be able to do, allow it to survive. I did talk with a couple of other cities that have planted trees. They did say that there was some issues with the shape of the tree as it grew, so I did talk to a couple people that have tried to do that, and they've had some challenges with it, but it's not impossible.
I'm just getting back, because they've got that space already designed into, you know, the plan, so they got the anchors and everything already in place.
For the tree?
Yeah. Right, you know, where the veterans' area would be in the building, community-
Bob, are they flesh anchors?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall, but the expenses that we've gone through haven't been that great, and the electrical would be used anyway, whether you have a live tree or fake tree or-
How about water?
That we'd have to take a look at. We'd have to take a look at the space to see what, how would accommodate a large tree. That'd be part of, we can go back and take a look and see how big a tree we think we could plant and how it would fit. What would it cost?
I can tell you the tree anchors, they're concrete blocks with large metal rings that are in different corners of the planting area. I think the part that I would need to ask for additional follow-up on is what the bottom of that hole looks like and how it was prepped. I don't know if you could plant something live in there or if it has been concreted down at the bottom. It is within a planting area that has irrigation, so there may be ways to work around that.
Do we want to have this brought back?
Sounding like it, yeah.
What's that?
Do we want to have it brought back rather, I mean, I don't know if we can settle anything tonight with the unknowns.
Yeah, that's fine.
And maybe if, I think I heard though some consensus around trying to work with Dickens. Whatever we do, it sounds like we have something on the east side and on the west side.
Right.
So that, I think that would be neat too for the whole season.
We got that. It sounds like we have a consensus on a live tree. We're exploring the possibilities of- Sure, come on up. You've got three minutes.
Okay. So, chamber leadership, I'm in chamber leadership now. We have selected a project. Our project is the Dickens Fair. So we are incorporating three phases. One is to work with the businesses around there, try to get them to do more lighting up on their businesses. The other phase is the tree down there. We're trying to get sponsorship. Sorry, I'm getting shocked. We're trying to get some sponsorship and trying to do better lighting. We're going to work with the property owners. We're going to move that lighting to about six-thirty, so when Dickens closes, it, I'm in charge of that part, that phase of it. I'm going to try to get a high school concert, maybe a high school choir, do a little concert show, half-hour show or something, and then do the lighting at six-thirty. So we're putting that together within the next couple of weeks and trying to get a meeting with the owners. Sorry, I have a VNS in my chest, I'm getting shocked right now. Anyways, so that's, we are working with Old Town Foundation to get that going and in place. So if you guys want to work with us on that, that would be really helpful and appreciated. So those are just some things to consider.
You know, Kristen, you can work with Chris, do you know her?
Yeah. If you haven't met her, that'd be great.
I haven't really met her, but I can work with her.
You should, she's a really nice lady.
So, yeah, we are working on that tree, and we have a few options as far as lighting goes, and we're trying to get more lights.
Kristen, do you have enough? Okay, we're good? All right, let's move to the next item.
This is item ten point two, presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2019-20 annual budget.
All right, good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my privilege to present the proposed 2019-20 budget for your consideration. I'd like to first recognize and thank the staff that spent a lot of hours, many hours, compiling and editing and putting this together from all different departments, particularly the Finance Department, Brad Kane is director, Shaden Ryan is our budget manager, and his staff. It's really a collective effort. A lot of hard work and effort goes into this to make sure that we're reflecting the city council's priorities in the budget that we put together and we present to you and make sure that the presentation and the city maintains its fiscal health moving forward. So the item that I'm going to be presenting tonight is a very high-level overview of some of the highlights of the budget document that is on the city's webpage. We've left hard copies with the city council. We don't expect to get into a lot of the details tonight. This is kind of an introduction. Then over the next several weeks, members of the community, members of the city council can really dig into the details. We'll come back in June and present this again for, as a public hearing. The city council then can have an opportunity to deliberate and potentially adopt it that evening, or if there's additional follow-up or effort, it could be adopted at the meeting after that. So this, again, is first introduction, opportunity at the end of my presentation for city council questions or direction to come back before we come back at the June 12th meeting. So I'll start with some of the highlights before we get into a few of the numbers, some of the things that are really driving the budget this year. First is some of our new facilities. So Civic Center, which we just talked about, our Christmas tree. We do have the money for the Christmas tree in the budget. It's built in, the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we mentioned tonight is in the proposed budget. That can certainly be adjusted depending on the ultimate direction that we receive from the city council. But one of the things about the budget is the Civic Center. It is nearing completion. We have costs in there for an entire fiscal year worth of operations of the Aquatic Center as well as most of a fiscal year of operation of the community center. So there's staffing involved in that operation as well as a lot of operation and maintenance costs associated with that. Most of the costs of the operations of the Civic Center come from CFD 2005-1, which is the Laguna Ridge Community Facilities District Maintenance Fund, as well as fees from programming and revenue from the operations out there. Next is the animal shelter, which is expected to open later this summer. That also has a year's worth of operational costs in the budget. Twenty-four staff members, hundreds of volunteers. It's a major new city operation, so you see increased staffing, increased costs associated with that, but that's been known as the city planned for the animal shelter. We knew those costs were coming, and those estimates are included in there, and so when you see the costs and you'll see some cost increases in this first year, a lot of it is reflective of the new facilities that are coming online. So included in that is the debt service payments, the startup costs, the staffing and operations of that facility. City council's top priority is public safety, and so we continue to maintain that and respect that, and so what you see, what you will see in the budget is a continued commitment towards that with five additional police personnel, four sworn, one non-sworn community service officer. We also, the operation of the Real-Time Information Center, we expect to go online here pretty quickly. Other programs that are underway, some things like the community notification system, we continue to invest in programs like the drone program that you saw earlier tonight and other technological advances and equipment replacement of things that are things that are necessary, we continue to invest in police services through, for the community. Another priority of the city council is economic development. You see a continued emphasis on ways to attract business to the community, grow existing businesses and add jobs to the community. So a continued investment to the city's Economic Development Incentive Fund, the amount of two-hundred thousand dollars, based on the new reserve policy that the city council adopted in April. There's also some additional excess reserve funds that are being put into the Economic Development Incentive Fund in the estimated amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a total of three-hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be added to that incentive fund. In addition to that, there's a hundred thousand dollar allocation for the Small Business Incentive Program. Another kind of new department, division of the city is Strategic Planning and Innovation. A new staff member will be coming on board in the next month. A number of projects that are going to be prioritized in the next fiscal year, starting with implementation of the Climate Action Plan, Resiliency Plan that the city received grant funding for will be kicked off here shortly. The city is also very interested in completing its first Smart City Action Plan. It would be a comprehensive effort looking at new ways of investing in technology and communication and data. It will be a comprehensive effort looking at new ways of investing in technology and communication and data. The city is, has formed an innovation team made up of city staff members. We call Team Inspire. They've been meeting on a regular basis. They continue to explore new ways of innovation across the city organization. New ways or better ways of utilizing taxpayer dollars, being more transparent in the things that we do, engaging our community, engaging our employees. And so a lot of ideas are coming out of that group and so there's money in there to fund their activities for the next fiscal year. Another effort is the Camera Road Urban Design Study, looking at that whole corridor, south side of the city from Lent Ranch Mall that was torn down earlier this year, heading further west along Camera Road. What does the city envision down there in the future? So we anticipate getting that kicked off here in the next fiscal year as well. The city also received grant funding for a bike share pilot project through SAICOG. So that project will be rolled out here in the coming months as well. So some, I think, exciting new projects that are being led by our Strategic Planning and Innovation Division. You've seen some reports and some presentations recently from our Operations and Maintenance Division, our Public Works Department about ways that division is maximizing taxpayer dollars to, to make our operation and maintenance and our, our infrastructure maintenance dollars go further. And so we've done a lot of different things that would allow us to, I guess, buy down the deficit we have in mostly roadway funding. Previously, the city identified almost that $8 million deficit when it comes to annual roadway funding through SB 1, through some of these cost-saving measures and efficiencies that the City Department, Operations and Maintenance Department have implemented. That deficit has been reduced to $2.3 million annually. So that's a big noticeable difference in just where we were from a few years back. So we're continuing to look for ways to be more efficient and then find better ways of spending taxpayer dollars. But we've, we've made some significant progress on, in finding ways to make our dollars go further. And you see some examples here on the screen on the contracting model. You approved us to move forward with this a few months ago about transitioning our contract model. We still contract for services, but we're taking out some of the, the, the middle contract services and direct contracting for that, as well as contracting directly for other services in different ways. It's saving us money. We're also going to computerize management, maintenance system that will be coming back to the City Council here in the near term to adopt and move forward with that program. That'll again be another way of being more efficient and plan for more preventative maintenance and proactive maintenance programs for the city going forward. Another thing I think that we're, I'm really proud of as your city manager is the steps the city's taken, not just this year, but over the past several years, to really take a hard look at the unfunded PERS liabilities that a lot of cities are really grappling with. The city's in much better shape than others, partly because of the steps we've taken over the last few years to pay down that debt. We're not just paying the minimum PERS payments, unlike doing advanced payments on your mortgage. We're getting ahead of that and, and really saving the taxpayers of Elk Grove millions of dollars in future interest payments by doing that. Since 2015-16, the city's prepaid, kind of advanced paid more than it needed to, $6.16 million. Right now, and this is, this is, this is data that's a little bit old because usually it, what, two years behind in some of the actuarial numbers. So some of these payments we made haven't caught up yet in the analysis. But citywide, we're 85% funded from a PERS perspective. PERS as a whole, as an agency statewide, is 68% funded. So we're much better off. Typically, you want to be above 70% to really feel good about where you are. We're 85%. So taxpayers, City Council should feel good about where we are in relation to our PERS debt and obligations. And so for the next several years, we're continuing to recommend advanced payments of the amount of $900,000 going forward. So you'll see that in the budget as well. So some of the key numbers. Total budget being presented in fiscal year 1920, $291 million. That's a small decrease from last year. Part of that is because, due to capital projects that are being completed that will no longer be there for next year. General fund, you do see an increase. The total general fund budget is recommended at $77.9 million. That's a 3.3 million increase, largely from the areas that I mentioned earlier. The Animal Shelter operation that's coming online, new police officer positions that are coming online, other, other costs that just go up over time. The good news, other good news, is that continue, the city continues to maintain a very healthy general fund balance. As you noted last month in the reserve policy, policy change that we recommended going from the, from 20 to 25%. You see reflected here that the city has a total of $25 million in a variety of different reserve accounts. $18.27 million in its Reserve for Economic Uncertainty. That's the 25% that we discussed. Another 3.65, another, which is 5% in this economic or this opportunity reserve account. So that's a total of 30%. In addition to that, we have $1.1 million in the Capital Reserve account. That includes an addition of, I think, $150,000 next year. And then $1.9 million total in the Economic Development Incentive Fund. That, that is inclusive of the $350,000 that I mentioned earlier. So it's, the money continues to stay in there until we identify a project in which to spend those resources. There's also $90,000 remaining as of the end of this fiscal year in the Small Business Economic Incentive Fund. So that adds up to a total of $25 million. So a brief just highlight of where the money comes from. These are the major categories of the city's revenues. Sales tax continues to be the leader at 37%, followed by property tax at 19%. Intergovernmental, which is the vehicle license and lieu fees. Other, other taxes, operating and other things round out the other things that we have in there. In the other taxes, you have things like transient occupancy taxes, utility user taxes, and franchise fees and things of that nature. On the expenditure side, you can see compensation. This is, again, this is general fund expenditures. Compensation drives most of the costs of the city, largely because the Police Department. Most of their costs are personnel-related. We also have 21% in our operating costs, internal services. Those are for services like GAS and IT and fleet and facilities and risk management that provide services for other internal operating departments. And then capital outlay and transfers out. So this is a pie chart that divides how the city spends its money by function, by department. Police Department continues to take up the vast majority of the city's revenues. It's slightly over 60% of total expenditures. That's higher than it was previously because of the way we've changed the way we're allocating internal services, as well as some of the direct PERS allocations. We're now showing those internal service costs allocated directly to each department. So instead of having a large amount of money just showing up in internal services, we're now saying, okay, how much of internal services is the Police Department using? Or the Administrative Department using City Manager's Office, Public Works? And so you'll see an increase in each of the different departments, partly because we're now allocating those internal services to the specific functions that are using those services. It's a more accurate, better way of budgeting and reflecting the true cost of service. Here's a snapshot of the new positions that are being recommended in the next fiscal year. I already mentioned the Public Works, Operations and Maintenance, new positions. These are, these are not net new positions. They're net new for the city, but they are just taking the place of existing staff that the city contracts for. So there's 13 various positions in our Operations and Maintenance Division. Police Department, we have five total, four sworn, one non-sworn. Code Enforcement, one additional code enforcement officer. We haven't added a code enforcement officer in several years. And then we need to keep up with the growth in the new neighborhoods that are being built, the continued emphasis on keeping neighborhoods clean and safe. We have one new human resource specialist in our Human Resources Department, again, as the city continues to grow. We're almost, with these new additional positions, we'll almost be to 400 total employees. And we continue to add and grow as a city and to keep up with the demand of the hiring and the training and everything that goes along with that. We're recommending an additional position for human resources. City Manager's Office, we see some of these positions related to the Civic Center. So we have six part-time attendant positions that will help staff our new community center when it opens. We have two full-time staff out there and we'll have six part-time staff that will help run events that may be in the evenings or on the weekends and make sure the facility runs smoothly. We have a senior GIS specialist in our Finance and Administrative Services Department. This is another position that is replacing a contract position. So it's not additional money out of the city budget. It's actually, we get more services for the dollars that we're spending. And finally, a new position out of our Solid Waste Fund in our Public Works Department, a Recycling and Waste Coordinator too. This position, position will largely be dealing with the new regulations relating to organic waste and food waste in the city. As we head towards some of those milestones, we need somebody to really help us work with businesses and the community in preparing for that, that major undertaking. There's a lot of numbers here. I'm not going to go through it all, but you can see the trends at the top, the revenue. We expect the revenues continue to grow over the next five years. We are not, we are not showing in here a recession. That certainly is possible and different pundits will tell you whether a recession's coming and how bad it's going to be and when it's going to be. We don't really know. No one knows. I think the good news is if a recession does hit, we do have our, our, our healthy fund reserves to fall back on. Right now, based on the information that we have, as well as some of our, our consultants that we use to help project some of these things, we're projecting modest growth in a lot of our revenue sources. The details and what we're projecting for each of those is detailed in the budget, so you can kind of see. But we're not, we're pretty conservative in the estimates that we have. On the expenditure side, again, we see some, some growth there as the city continues to grow and the services that we provide grows. We do have in there built-in additional police officers every year, additional staff positions, additional things that, that we need to keep up with that growth. At the very bottom, you can see, well, as you head down the chart, you can see the fund balance levels also continue to grow each year. So we continue, we are, we are bringing in more revenue than we're spending on an annual basis, so that's a good thing. In the first year, you do see a few kind of one-time expenses. But overall, the city has a balanced budget and projected to continue to have a balanced budget over the five-year time horizon with continued growth in our reserves. So that presents, that is my overview of the 2019-20 budget with some of the highlights. Again, details of which are on the website or in hard copy for the City Council or others that would like a copy. We'll be coming back on June 12th with more, more detailed public hearing for adoption, potential adoption of the budget, opportunity for more questions and comments if the council has or members of the public. At this point, I'd like to see if the council has any questions of me or open it for public comment. Any questions?
Another question. I'd like to move the 10 o'clock rule. I know, but we still have these two items in front of us.
I'm being hopeful. Four more minutes.
Thank you. Councilmember Detrick seconded the motion.
Okay, all right. Got a motion second. All right, all in favor? Post extension.
Great presentation, Jason. Thank you for all your work, Shay. I love seeing budget where the reserve numbers grow.
So do I.
You know, everything balances out and we're able to keep up with things and, good job. It's grown in the right direction. Grow black, not red.
That's right.
Great work.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, want to open for public comment? I want to close public comment because no members of the public signed up to speak. Council, direction and deliberation. Received?
Received.
All right, next item.
Take us to item 10.4, which is to receive information on the Elk Grove Police Department's Unmanned Aircraft System, UAS program, and provide direction as appropriate.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to excuse myself from this presentation because my husband works for the Police Department and has had some minor involvement with this program.
Are you going to leave for the night? You want to handle 10.5 first?
I can.
Why don't we do that? Yeah. Captain, is that okay?
Absolutely.
All right, let's do 10.5.
Excellent presentation, Kara.
Here we have, we do have somebody signed up to speak.
Oh, do we? 10.5? Ew. A member signed up to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Kara Taylor Seaman. I'm a finance analyst with City of Elk Grove. I'm trying to find my presentation here. All right, so I am here tonight to present the special tax districts and community facilities districts and the annual increases that staff is recommending for fiscal year 1920. In way of background, these districts were established dating back, they started in 2002. The most recent district was established in 2006. And together they provide financial resources for the city for a broad spectrum of needs throughout. And those include infrastructure, police, general maintenance, and then more specific maintenance for streets and streetlights. Together, there are five community facilities districts and two assessment districts. Those differ primarily by what their function is and voting rights. There's just a variety of like what you can do with that money. This slide summarizes the seven special tax districts that are in the staff report and how those tax levies can be used. Again, the application of the levies, it's governed by the formation documents for each district, either a formation document or an engineer's report. First of all, there are bonded districts. Those are districts where the city has taken out loans and issued bonds, and those are to pay for facilities and development within those districts. They are tied to geographic locations within the city and they were formed to, specifically to fund infrastructure. The first one there, CFD 2002-1 East Franklin, and the second one, CFD 2003-1 Poppy Ridge. Both of those have bonds outstanding that will be paid off in the fiscal year 2038. Laguna Ridge has two bonds outstanding. One is scheduled to be paid off in the year 2046 and the other in the year 2049. So the tax levies collected are used to secure the bond payments as well as infrastructure. And then the goals for those infrastructure projects are roadways, sewer, drainage and public improvements. There's a lot more detail there, but this is just to summarize. As far as the services districts go, those can be either community facilities districts or assessment districts. And collectively, they pay for services throughout the city. So police, general maintenance, and then the specific maintenance for streets and streetlights. These are not bonded and they don't expire. They're scheduled to be levied to property owners in perpetuity. The annual increases are dictated and governed by the formation documents or the engineer's report. They can be either a flat rate, and in two districts, it's actually zero. It can be tied to the Consumer Price Index or to the Construction Cost Index as detailed by the formation documents. This slide summarizes what staff is recommending for increases for fiscal year 1920. The percentage increases are listed kind of the second column from the right. And then I've listed just the corresponding dollar increase for a single-family unit. As a side note, this slide details the single-family, but there are multifamily rates and in some cases, non-residential rates that are, and property owners that are levied. In conclusion, and although each district is unique, there are some overall goals for the districts throughout the city. We want to maintain consistently high levels of service. We want to align funding levels with the needs and projects throughout the city. We want to incorporate long-term forecasting and ensure that there's a stable source of revenue for projects and services. We want to maintain adequate reserves to meet regulatory requirements and to fund those future projects. And then finally, and probably most importantly, we want to plan for stable and gradual increases and no shocks to the system, to property owners in the city. Staff's recommendation is that the council approve the new rates for fiscal year 2019-20 and adopt the resolution to levy the special taxes as detailed in the staff report. And with that, I am available to answer your questions.
Any questions? No questions. Perfectly clear. Thank you. Want to open for a public comment? I have one speaker sign up to speak. Bonnie Stensler?
Okay, Mayor and Council members, for the sake of time, I'm Bonnie Stensler and this is Teresa Edwards. And we did have some residents from Del Webb Glenbrook here, but they've kind of faded into the night. We do have two diehards back there, Eleanor and Maggie. We're here tonight because when this came up on the agenda, the Del Webb residents were concerned because they're in the, the, and I'm blanking out, sorry. The Laguna Ridge, late hour, I'm going to, in the Laguna Ridge District. Since we're a 55-plus community, we have a lot of retired people and single people who... we have a lot of retired people and single people who live there are single income. We did look at the 42-page analysis, trying to go through it. We've got people who have questions. They couldn't add up. They're trying to figure out, is this going to be $5 here, $100 there? I think for the sake of time, what we're asking for, if we could sit with your finance analyst, somebody, or I know Jason answered a few questions for us, and just get a few questions answered further. They're basically looking for the dollar amount per their lot, and they can't figure out all the numbers and that, looking through 42 pages. We know this was all contracted long ago, but just easing their concerns right now because they're afraid they're going to, taxes are going to keep going up and up, and they're going to have to move out. So anything you can help us, help them feel more secure, we'd appreciate. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely.
And I did want to thank Ms. Taylor Seaman. Earlier this afternoon, I went to her office without an appointment, and she did clarify some things, but again, we just kind of wanted more clarification. What is it going to cost us? How much more taxes are we going to have to pay? And since this is Melrose, it's going to be for another 30 years. It's not like the one-time assessment. So, thank you.
Thank you. There are no additional speakers. Want to close public comment? Counsel deliberation and direction.
I'll move staff's recommendation, but Brad or Kara, can we make sure to get that information to, thank you.
Yeah.
I got a motion second. All in favor?
Hi.
Close extension. All right. Next item, 10.4.
Good night, Councilmember Nguyen.
For the record.
I just remembered, I wanted to be a cop when I was a kid. Does that, do I have a conflict of interest?
I think I have a conflict.
Again, for the, for.
Not impersonal, Captain.
Again, for the record, Councilmember Nguyen has recused herself on this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Tim Albright, captain with the police department. Honored to be here tonight to present on the unmanned aircraft system for the police department. Goes by a couple of different names, so I just wanted to clarify that upfront, that it's unmanned aircraft, unmanned aerial, also known as a drone. For purposes of this presentation, as we move forward as an organization, we're going to refer to it as a UAS, an unmanned aircraft system. Want to share a little bit about how we got here. You know, as a law enforcement agency that's been in existence for the last 15 years, we have had the fortunate opportunity to rely upon our agency peers, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, Sacramento Police Department, California Highway Patrol, and Placer County Sheriff's Department, to provide us with air support resources. Certainly, those resources that we've all seen in our communities at various times, impacts crime, provides for a safe environment for our officers who are executing their jobs on the streets, and certainly provides for a sense of safety and security for our community members. With that, of course, with those requests for those air support assets, those are prioritized in those various agencies. Those are provided by our peers, so we end up in the stack with those requests across the county and even beyond. For an example, in Calif, I'm sorry, in calendar year 2018, we requested air support through one of those four agencies 322 times, receiving those assets 182 times. So you can see that certainly an asset that we use on a regular basis, which really got us thinking as to the viability of a UAS program here within the city to support some of those same ideas. An unmanned aircraft system is about 4% of the cost of a true air support unit, and certainly the capital cost, buying a helicopter, you know, a fixed-wing aircraft, those are just not feasible and incredibly expensive. The UAS system does provide many of the same benefits to both our community members from a safety and security perspective, as well as our staff in providing that higher level of security. With a UAS system, we have the ability to scale as we either grow the program or leveled off for a period of time. The timeliness of our ability to deploy, certainly, we don't have to be in competition for calls for service. If we deem it appropriate to launch a UAS, and I'll get into what that looks like in a few moments, the availability is instantaneously. This does, of course, allow us still to use those assets from our peer agencies when either the UAS is not the appropriate tool, or perhaps it's down, or perhaps those two can complement each other. Just giving you kind of a national view, state view, local view of the use of UAS, you'll see here that over 900 UAS programs exist for public safety agencies across the United States. If we drill down to just law enforcement, that number is at 600 plus. So there are 600-plus law enforcement agencies across the United States who have some level of a UAS program. If we look at California, that number goes to 58, so 58 law enforcement agencies in our county. And as you look at the local, I won't read through them, but you can see that a number of our agency peers, certainly the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, Citrus Heights, Roseville. Interestingly enough, this morning, we had a missing person that was at risk, wherein the Consumer's Fire District offered their services by virtue of a UAS to assist us in locating, which is one of our primary focuses for the use of our UAS. And as I talk to my area peers, agencies, everybody either has a UAS program or is in conversation as to that within their organizations. Some of the UAS examples that I see both for us as well as our peer agencies, search and rescue operations I mentioned, missing persons, at-risk missing persons. Law enforcement agencies have a fair number of those, and certainly, we're no different in our community. The ability to get assets on the ground and assets in the air to help locate those folks who are missing. Maybe it's a small child in the middle of the night with inclement weather. Perhaps it's somebody that's a dementia patient who, you know, got out of the house in his last. We have those calls on a regular basis. The ability to search for those with an air asset is, allows us to do that search with a lot greater efficiency and effectiveness. Homeless encampment documentation, not unlike other cities, we have homeless encampments. This provides us the opportunity to document where they are for a couple of reasons. Number one, to align services to those folks who are within the encampments. We don't know where they all exist, and some are somewhat hidden. That air asset allows us to safely know where those folks are and plug resources into them. It also allows us to determine the scope of cleanup when those encampments are abandoned and get a better feel for where they exist throughout our city. Disaster and hazmat, I think those are somewhat obvious. In fact, if you remember about a year, year and a half ago, we had a train derailment just south of town here, and I believe there were 22 cars that were derailed. In that particular instance, the fire department launched a drone or UAS with some scent devices that they were able to fly in to determine if there was any chemicals or toxins being emitted by virtue of that crash prior to personnel coming in and providing assistance. Traffic collisions, crime scene investigation, certainly, that higher-level view tells a whole different story, allows us to determine perhaps in collisions what the primary factor was that led to that, and give us an idea of, from a viewpoint that quite obviously we wouldn't normally have. Public safety incidents, you know, we hear these sometimes with our helicopters that try and make the announcements to our communities. If we have somebody we're looking for that has fled from officers or fled from a crime scene and is located either in a business district or neighborhood, this provides us the ability to use those assets combined with our on-ground assets to bring that to closure relatively quickly and in a much safer way for both our community members and our officers. Certainly, to pay back and assist our peer agencies, provide our pilots more frequency in utilizing the equipment, and then the ability to assist in other areas within the city, other city departments. Perhaps it's a weather event in which we want to see the level of Laguna Creek or some of the levy issues that might be at play in our community. Gives us the opportunity to use that across the entire city. What our plan looks like, we're not launching these UAS from any fixed point here in the city. They're a commercial UAS, a commercial drone that's purchased or can be purchased by the public. We outfit them with the same cameras. They have the ability to be deployed from the trunk of a patrol vehicle, and that's our plan. So our initial plan would be to purchase six to eight UAS systems, to strategically deploy those within various shifts so that there's good coverage throughout the city and on all shifts. And then when a call that would require the use of a UAS, the officer would deploy from the trunk. And I have up there line-of-sight flight. Our program will be just that, that the pilot actually watches the drone fly with a visual observer partner. There is no flying the drone outside of that person's purview. And what's really exciting, and the city manager spoke about it earlier, we know our real-time information center is just on the other side of this wall. The plan is to integrate our UAS system with the real-time information center. That's slated for the next four to six weeks, and my desire would be that our UAS program would launch, no pun intended, sometime midsummer, and that those two would complement each other. A big part of a successful program like this, of course, is community outreach, and we're absolutely focused toward that end. We have a desire to collaborate with our community members to demystify what this program is about, and maybe more importantly, what it is not about. And our desire is to do that in several different forums that I'll talk about in a moment. Through those, we'd like to gain some input on policy. What is it that our community members feel should be a part of policy? We have a draft policy now, but we want to drill down deeper, and we want to share that with our community members and really develop that, that everybody's working off the same sheet of music. There's no mystery to what this UAS program is about. We want to provide live demonstrations. We want to talk about the situations in which a UAS would be used. We want to have them see these UAS systems, that it's a simple hobbyist drone. There's nothing special about it. And then we want to talk about the intent of the program in great detail, recognizing that, you know, our goal here is to safeguard privacy. The Fourth Amendment still applies, whether you're on the ground, in the air, and we're, we know that. We want to communicate our commitment to that, and doing so with our community members is critical for the success of this program. So as I mentioned, June 5th, I'll be presenting to the chief's advisory board. That'll be similar to what I already related, some policy input, some demystifying of what the program is. June 19th, I've scheduled for this chamber at 6:00, a community meeting. We'll broadcast that through our various social media channels. Additionally, I'll be doing a podcast in the next couple of days that we will post as well, that will kind of answer some of the common questions related to UAS so that our community members would have various opportunities to understand what we're doing and have opportunities to provide input. And then, of course, as we are at the Neighborhood Summit, as we're at community meetings, as we're at this meeting, the opportunities to, you know, demystify and really connect with the community on this will be our goal. So next steps, as I mentioned, the community outreach. Through that, we'll begin to finish up the policy development. We'll apply for a certificate of authorization. That's what's called a COA from the FAA that provides us the law enforcement authority to fly in certain circumstances. We'll be making the purchases. It should be noted that we have those monies available to us now, so there's no additional requests. Those monies were asset forfeiture money. We'll begin training more pilots. We have three pilots trained now. Our goal will be to train more and then also train what I call the visual observers to have a two-person pilot team or UAS team, if you will. And then my timeline, as I mentioned, midsummer, which I think will complement well to the Arctic in standing that up. So our recommended action is that you would receive this information and provide any direction. And with that, I am available for any questions.
Any questions? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so what kind of armament are we putting on these bad boys?
They will have a camera and a camera loads.
Just kidding, just kidding. I do have actually some serious questions, though, with respect to the line of sight and sort of taking the place of traditional air operations. Just the other day, we had the helicopter in the air looking for the arson suspect over there in my neighborhood. And that helicopter was covering a pretty good footprint, looking for this guy that was on the ground. Are they going to be able to have somebody flying the drone where you can still see it, even though it's a spec, but that is able to cover that kind of an area?
Yeah, the geometry associated with, you know, high elevation and the ability to cover, essentially, we cover a lot with the camera itself.
Gotcha.
So getting the drone to an elevation that then employs the camera and the zoom associated with it allows us to get, within the same orbit that you would see a helicopter, we would be able to accomplish that in a little bit more, with a little more nimble, nimbleness to get down to a lower elevation if need be.
Okay. And then the second question, as you mentioned that we're going to be purchasing commercially available units, are there any units out there, or if we anticipated potentially adding a PA system to these UASs? Because, you know, that's another aspect of the, when the helicopter's up, sometimes they're sending messages to the people on the ground, either to shelter in place and/or, hey, this is who we're looking for, keep an eye out.
So there are, those drones are a little larger because the speakers have to be larger. They haven't had great success with that, although the ability to, you don't have rotor wash and rotor noise with a drone, obviously, that you would with a helicopter. So we'll look at that. There are technologies evolving daily with those for law enforcement's specific drones. So we'll continue to look at that, but there's none really that any agencies are employing now. We would have to complement that with, you know, on-the-ground announcements, which I recognize now that helicopters don't always, you know, we receive, you know, calls every time the helicopter's up because they can't quite understand what they're saying. So we have to strike a balance there.
There you go, Brian. You invent the first compact drone with a solid speaker that puts that message on the ground, buddy.
And Christmas lights. Actually, I, Mayor, I do have a quick question. You know, I've been to those demos in the past, and the ones that the UASs that you showed here, at least a few years ago, inclement weather, actually, they didn't do very well. Has the technology gotten better?
Yeah, it actually has. We recently went to a class where they had 40 mile-an-hour winds, and we were able to stabilize it to the extent that you could actually see the picture, and the drone stayed in a, you know, relatively small pattern. So yeah, again, that technology is evolving. It's evolved since I started this presentation, so.
Yeah, great. All right, thanks.
Captain, what's the battery life on these drones?
You know, it varies. You know, you buy different stage batteries. Our plan would be to have multiple batteries charged in the trunk, kind of a setup of battery chargers. What we look to do is have a 30-minute flight time with, so a 20-minute flight time with an overlap of total 30 minutes. So most batteries are in the 30-minute range. We'll stage the, if we have an active event that we need to deal with, we'll launch one, and then 20 minutes later, launch the second, so there's an overlap back in, and then recharge. So we'll leapfrog to provide continuity and coverage.
So like, all of my rechargeable batteries, eventually, they just go bad?
Yeah.
What happens when the battery goes bad? Does the drone come back, or I mean, what?
Yeah, when the battery's either low or it goes bad, it's GPS back to where it began, so it returns automatically.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. Wow, pretty cool. Yeah. Does it come with lights?
It does.
Really?
Yes.
Yeah, it sounds interesting. Yeah, awesome.
I think the technology's gotten on different units, because I believe they were using some even for security that actually stay up for hours. So I mean, it's probably a bigger unit with bigger battery packs, but, you know, maybe that's something to look at is, you know, you have the ones for the everyday use, but when you have a major incident, maybe we have the one bigger one that we bring out.
Yeah, our original plan was, you know, the six to eight, so we get a feel for its usefulness. Does it work? Do we, you know, does it serve what the purpose we hoped it would serve? And then from there, to make it scalable. Obviously, they're inexpensive enough that, you know, we can do some experimenting with different size and such and still scale the program appropriately.
I know that some people don't like the whole idea of Big Brother. It's just another part of that, but to me, if you've got nothing to hide, there's nothing to worry about.
Well, we're focused on, you know, their privacy. That's, we understand the challenges with that, and we want to assure the community that that's a high priority for us, and we'll do that through transparency and communicating with them. Perfect.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Want to open for public comment? No members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment? All right, receive and file. Thank you. Want to adjourn the meeting at 10:23 PM. Thank you.